Yes.
Eight o'clock, we start our agenda meeting?
Our nine AM call to work will be Chairwoman Barbara Acock, our invocation will be Vice Chairman Chris Gurley, pledge of allegiance is by Commissioner George Wayne Acock Jr. Then we will go into our organization meeting with County Attorney E.B. Gordon Parker presiding. We'll have the election of the chairman, election of the vice chairman. Then we'll move to the approval of minutes for the November twenty first, twenty twenty-three minutes. When they go into a discussion and adjustment of the agenda, and I do have two walk-ons for consent. Number one is unfinished business, well, we're gonna put it under consent. Motion to appropriate three hundred and seventy-five thousand towards the Goldsboro Union Station stabilization project contingent on Save Union Station Group raising seven hundred and fifty thousand and the city of Goldsboro contributing three hundred and seventy-five thousand for the project. And this is based upon future use of the property being retail, commercial, and/or for use as a train depot. And that is with an appropriate budget amendment.
And what was that at Chip? I'm sorry, I lost you there.
I'm just, I'm just adding it.
It's, it's, it's actually been added to civic clerk under your unfinished business tab. It's just not on your handwritten one.
I would like that.
We're moving it to consent.
Yeah, absolutely.
And cable worker magic.
Questions on that, Madam Chair?
Yeah, me too.
One, why are we doing it now instead of putting in next year's budget? For one, and two, is there any provision to prevent Goldsboro from using it for Goldsboro, Goldsboro business offices?
The way that he read the thing would prevent that.
Are you, well, I know you're, you're sure, yeah.
We're putting a stipulation in here that a future use of the property would be for retail, commercial, and/or for use as a train depot only.
Not when it's for offices, good.
And I got, to tag on to that, it's the, um, the three seventy-five that we're proposing to allocate to that project is contingent on, we won't write the check until they raise the money. Cause my understanding is they wanted a commitment from the city and the county so they could start raising the money from the private sector.
That is correct.
Right, so we'll be writing the check until they raise the money.
Correct.
So this gonna be the next year.
It'll be next year, okay. Now, my, one more thing here, why are we putting it on the consent instead of doing that out in public?
I just didn't just go ahead and, I mean, I'm good with it going under consent, but you'd rather leave it there.
I'd rather leave, leave it there because I've been asked questions about this from people.
I'm good either way.
Yeah, I would say just leave it, leave it here.
What is the consensus of the people that you've talked to? What is the consensus of the people you've talked to?
Why are we spending money on a dilapidated building?
That's, that's exactly what I've heard, you know?
So.
Well, for me, I just won't, I, personally, I don't think we'll ever have to spend the money.
Well, and I was hoping that the rail would, would, we would have some, some information on the approval of the, of the line.
Didn't you say December?
I thought it was gonna be in November, in the November.
Supposed to be the end of this.
Well, they moved it to December.
Okay.
Well, I think this is just a, a thing here, we, we've got enough evidence here that we can back out if we want to. With conditions, am I correct?
You're right.
We, we would have a lot of conditions in here if we wanted to back out in the contract and everything.
They have, is contingent upon them raising seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars before we write a check.
Yeah.
And it's based upon the future use of this property being retail, commercial, and/or for use as a train depot only. They would have to agree to those terms.
So, the man's just quick, of course, I, you know, my concession was the rail part from, from Wallace to Wilmington. That's, that's the whole reason I'm, would support it is to get the freight from Wilmington forward to here. But the, um, I just foresee it costing a ton of money and them coming back to us. What's, what's to keep us from having to spend more money after we put money in it to start with? That's my question.
Did they say we're being grand or something?
If you don't vote to appropriate the money, you don't spend it.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I say this? There are members of this county that are raising three quarters of a million dollars in an effort just to stabilize the building to see whether or not they can raise the money to repair it. All this is, is just to stabilize the building. They're raising three quarters of a billion dollars and they're just simply asking the county to put in one fourth of that and the city to put in one fourth. The city put in their one fourth, they've pledged one fourth. All we're doing here is pledging that if they raise that three quarters of a million dollars that we will contribute one fourth. That's all we're doing here, we're, we're not spending any money, we're pledging it if they raise three quarter of a million dollars. And that's, that's a huge ask, that's a huge task for them to do that.
Chip, when you read that, make sure you emphasize that part of it, if you would please.
I'll be glad to.
But I would say just leave it as is and don't put it under, under consent.
Put it under unfinished.
Unfinished business.
That consensus.
And to reiterate overall, like, uh, we may not have to even submit this money because there are a lot of funds out there, um, federal funds out there that we may be able to have access to.
Well, she did mention that, there's a commission federal money for it too.
I mean, even, you know, going back and forth to D.C., the trans, you know, the, the, uh, reps that are on the transportation committees, they have stated there is funding, you know, so, you know, we may not have to spend that money.
So out of the twelve, we were told two routes, but the other day when we were at the train station, the guy from the train or DOT said there was twelve routes. So if we're not selected as one of the routes, are we still gonna, are we still gonna try to preserve the, the building or not?
What'd you say to him, excuse me?
I said, with twelve, we were told at the meeting that they kind of presented that there was two routes. Wilmington to Raleigh and Salisbury to Asheville. But we went to the train station the other day, but the, the train guy, DOT man, whatever, whoever guy was, said that there was twelve routes.
What I understood.
Right, so if we're not, if we're not selective as one of the routes, are we still wanting to perceive we're trying to preserve the building?
You can add some language in there that it has to be a selected route, I mean, you know, and, and upon being selected as one of the routes for improvement, if that's what you wanna add. It's gonna continue, I mean.
Is that, is, did y'all, I mean, when we've.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, the stuff the other day when she presented, there was two routes. Well, we went to the train station the other day, the guy that's supposed to be, I guess he's the, the man that's been involved in this for twenty years. He says there's twelve routes that's North Carolina State. So, for some reason, that we're not selected as one of the routes, are we still going to, are they still wanting to preserve the building is what I'm asking, I guess.
I believe so, I mean, and it's, it's a win-win and, you know, if you think about it, if, if, if they stabilize the building and if they're able to renovate the, the building, eventually it's gonna help the community down there. I mean, with the blight and the other issues that taking place, so I don't think that it's a lose, lose situation.
But it's gonna be a taxable building, not a government-owned. Now, now, no. I'm asking. I understand, we're not saying that. It is a government-owned building at the present time, but they have the option to do a lot of things with the building, but they can't do anything with the property unless they stabilize it. And that's why, again, I stress, there is a group of citizens that are pledging to raise three quarters of a million dollars. That's a lot of money. It is, to stabilize it. And all we're doing is saying, if you do that, we're going to put three seventy-five. I got no problem with that.
Yeah.
That's all we're doing.
I don't either.
That's all we're doing. Yeah. All the rest of that, we're gonna leave to them in regards to routes and what they're going to do with the building and so. Well, I still ain't sent a bona fide engineer report on it.
And that was something we requested.
Well, they sent some stuff, but they weren't really an engineer for it. I'm just saying, I'm just, I'm just gonna go on record, this gonna cost more than one point five million dollars to fix the place. Absolutely, it is. I'm talking about destabilized everything that's got, that I saw. And I'm not an engineer and, and by no means, but I'm just telling you, um, this, this, this building's gonna cost, when it's all said and done, depending on what goes in there, I'm telling you, the bill is gonna cost, we'll have fif, somebody's gonna have fifteen plus million dollars in it, easily.
Well, hopefully, some great money will help.
So I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there.
I, I don't think we are gonna be anticipating that.
But I foresee them coming back to us for more money. I'm not saying the group, I'm just saying, you know, all involved is, is, I just foresee this, and, I mean, we got a lot of projects on the table and a lot more that we've got to do, so we need to make sure that we don't overstep something. We need to, we don't wanna give them false hope that we give them three seventy-five and then they come back needing two, two million more dollars that we're gonna, we're gonna pony up two million more dollars just like that, because it ain't gonna happen that easy.
I think we have other things we can spend money on in this count.
Exactly, well.
I think Mr. Gordon, you can put that in writing, you know, this is it, if you want anymore, you can have to raise it. And get out and sell hot dogs or something.
I'm good with the three seventy-five and I'm good wherever you put it at, but I just want, I just want that being known that, you know, I don't care.
Are you good with the restriction of, or did you want to add, I think your question was, you were thinking in your head there about adding the restriction that the route be selected as one of the routes to be reestablished or leave that out?
And then I asked, you know, after the fact, do they want to, to repair the building regardless? And I think everybody says yes.
I think, okay, I think so, I think that's correct.
But then.
And I think anything, anything further, we don't, you know, it always has to come through this board anyway, so I don't think we have to kind of add any of the language to this because we, we have the option to always say.
I think we're overthinking this.
Just get it started and just work back.
And I just can't, I can't foresee them putting, putting that track back in. Cause when they took it out, oh, the only reason they didn't take it out all the way to Goldsboro was because all those big feed mills down there and the two pickle plants, they were, they were, they were the biggest customers, is the only reason they didn't take it out all the way to Goldsboro.
How would, how would Mount Olive Pickle, would that be benefit to Mount Olive Pickle if they had freight there?
It would be beneficial, it would be beneficial to everybody, I think those tracks are taken out strategically.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mount Olive, yeah.
I'm talking about here in Goldsboro.
Oh, 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 oh.
Would you do Mount Olive Pickle?
No, well, they can, they can, they can, no bigger than that, so they can truck it.
Well, things, things has changed a lot since they took them tracks. Well, things, things has changed a lot since they took them tracks, that the port is a whole lot bigger than what it was.
I agree with that now.
And I just see container traffic. I see container traffic, I, that, I want to make sure, I'm in, I'm in favor of putting them tracks back. Major in favor because that's gonna put Wayne, that's gonna put Wayne County in the center point of all of the above. North, south, east, and west, with seven ninety-five, uh, completed, that is gonna give us rail and, uh, road structure that we can move, we can move things anywhere we can, they want to in the United States or in North Carolina especially.
Yeah.
So I, I'm all for putting those tracks back. And if it means putting that building back to get those tracks, then I'm all in. Well, I'll be back up, I ain't gonna say all in.
Partially in.
We're three seventy-five, if they raise the budget.
You can, you can go to pipe, pull them out of anywhere with the trains going through, and right now, the only cars it's pulling and knowing that it's ninety-two or ninety-three of them, the only cars it's pulling is grain cars and walks a while a tanker that's probably going to Mount Olive Pickle or somewhere.
Yeah, but this open up, this open up container traffic.
Container traffic, right, right now, you don't see no containers on that, on that train.
You're fully correct, man.
It's a loose bulk.
Yeah.
They call it loose bulk.
Yeah.
Commissioner Harders. Since we've had a full discussion and the public view and so forth, can we just go ahead and move that to consent agenda then?
Okay.
Thank you. We've had fifteen minutes discussion already.
Now we're going back up to consent?
Yeah, is that okay?
That's fine with me.
I think it'd be good under consent, a bit more.
When is that gonna be under the consent agenda?
Fourteen.
Huh?
Is it fourteen or not?
It would be, uh.
Yes, it'll be, it'll be number.
Fourteen.
Fifteen.
Huh? Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Fourteen, because it's thirteen.
You should have to move it above that one.
Then I have another one to go under consent.
Okay.
And this is to, uh, remove the restrictions from lots six and seven at Park East. Similar to what we have done in the past with, uh, with the previous lots. Is that appropriate, Andrew?
What do we remove, Chip, uh, maybe, um, restrictions?
You want to speak earlier?
Good morning, um, if you recall, uh, Park East, there was restrictive covenants on all the lots that are out there and they govern, you know, appearance of the buildings, uses, um, all sorts of different things. There is a provision that one of the, any original owner can remove those restrictive covenants. We've done that with Hoshikawa, we've done that with, um, Select Genetics, um, and some other lots out there as well. We're in discussions, uh, for, um, it, it's not public yet, but economic development projects on six and seven. Um, and we anticipate having to remove those restrictions, so we just wanna go ahead and do that. So when, uh, we are ready to move forward, that, that's not gonna be an obstacle for it.
So this is lot six and seven?
Six and seven. And seven is the one that joins the train track. And then, um, on Challen Drive, where the cul-de-sac is, if you're driving down, that's on the right, and then six is the eleven acre lot that's, um, just on the left of that cul-de-sac. I believe lot seven's about forty-four acres.
Have you heard anything else on the new business out there about the track, problems that they were having?
We're still in discussions on that.
Okay.
You mentioned Select Genetics, uh, they've already reached out to the college for help.
Okay. Yeah, I.
That's, that's gonna be good to.
Been in talk with their attorney, um, I haven't heard from them about a week and a half, but I, I know that they're working on, on their end, their due diligence to get it closed out. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. All right. Then we move on to, so that's all the adjustments I have on the agenda. We move to a nine A M. public hearing to receive public comments on a request to rezonate nineteen acres from R A twenty to R ten for the, uh, for property located off of U S seventy west and identifies tax parcel two six seven one nine zero forty-three fifty-eight. The board may take action following the public hearing. I think Barry's here, if you have any questions right now.
What are they gonna do, sell it, Barry? How many acres?
Yes, ma'am, they're, um, they're looking to, um, to have a developer who's interested in, in this part of the property to come here and do a, um, residential development, which is R ten would allow for residential, but allows for a higher density, um, than the R twenty would. So, and I think the total of the track is eighteen acres is what they're rezoning.
And we've got a map of it, it's on the thing right there, on the, uh.
Should be in there.
Get, get air to the right.
To your package.
What are they gonna do with property?
Uh, well, I think they're wanting to do, uh, single-family lots, but they're all duplexes, so you'll have a property line kind of down the middle.
Yeah, I remember seeing it in the agenda, yeah.
So they'll, um, they'll be individual lots, but be duplex units, kind of like on, um, Country Day Road, I think there's a similar type of.
Lots of vehicles, just put drivers there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Then we'll recess the Board of Commissioners meeting, reconvene the Wayne County Board of Adjustments, where we have a public hearing to receive public comment on a special use permit for Piney Grove Solar Energy Facility. The board may take action following that public hearing. Then we go into a second public hearing for the Board of Adjustments to receive public comment on a future, on a special use permit for Turtle Cove Solar Energy Facility. Again, the board may take action after hearing that evidence. We will then, after those two, uh, Board of Adjustment hearings, adjourn the Wayne County Board of Adjustments. And then we will go into our reconvene the Wayne County Board of Commissioners and go into our consent agenda. And, uh, first items on that consent agenda are your late disabled veterans exemption applications and your late present use value applications. All of those have been vetted by the tax office and are appropriate to be approved.
These letters are, um, letters that were received for, uh, the public hearings on the solar facilities. Some were by email, some were by, um, United, that's all.
Mr. Parker, since I, I want to read one of these, uh, uh, solar facilities, do I need to remove myself or?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Unless you own something in these two that are before you do that.
No, no, no.
You, you would not.
Of course, Board of Adjustment meetings being quasi-judicial, you're looking for findings of fact. We're making a decision, uh, not looking at personal opinions or anything of that nature. And these letters, you would have to read them and discern whether they're providing any facts or whether they're just providing personal opinions. All right, moving on, we go, uh, we, uh, our present use value is done, we'll move on to our budget amendments.
Good morning, the first budget here is number two oh six from.
Services on aging department, this is to appropriate funds that they've received in the amount of fourteen thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars from the, uh, for ship, the ship grant.
Hold on just a minute, I, I need to catch up.
They all show up on the big screen? Oh, my God.
There he is. I'm caught up, thank you, ma'am.
All right, and then the last budget amendment is budget amendment two oh nine, and that is, uh, to appropriate funds to return because they were unspent for J C P C in the amount of two hundred and ninety dollars. Uh, that was for the Methodist Home for Children, for one seventy-six, the Transition and Reentry Program, and then the Family Preservation Community Commitment of a hundred and thirteen dollars and one cent. That is all I have.
You don't have it too?
Well, it, for today, yes, sir.
We'll take it.
I know, it shocked me.
You're making yourself look good today.
Well.
Okay, then we.
She looks good every day.
Aw, thank you.
Thank you, Angie. Uh, we're moving on to number eleven, is a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-six Wayne County farm lease bids. And I'll ask Andrew to come up and speak to your votes.
Good morning again, um, if you recall, um, we bid out our farm leases every three years, we started that, I believe, in seventeen or eighteen, but this is the third time that we've bid it out. Um, so everything is in your informational packet, including a spreadsheet summary for each one, so you can see what our current lease is and then what the new bid amount is. The properties are listed right there, um, in, in front of you on that spreadsheet. The only, um, change is we added Goldsboro Business Campus Phase Two, so this is the undeveloped side. Um, we were farming the entire, um, portion of that, but obviously we've developed Phase One. So we went ahead and bid it, bid it out Phase Two, so we wouldn't have to maintain that. Um, that was bid out on condition that each year we have the option to terminate that lease. So in the event we're ready to proceed with development during the next three years, we can, um, work that out with the farmer. Um, we did not bid out Park East this year. Um, we have moved forward pretty quickly with development out there with our shell buildings and, and some potential projects, so we're kind of running out of space and we anticipate within the next three years, pretty much everything out there is gonna be developed, so we did not, um, bid out Park East. Uh, there was one property behind Wilbur's on seventy that we, um, bid out, it's a little over four acres, we did not receive any bids on that, so that was the only other change.
How long do these bids last, Angie, when they bid for them, these properties?
It's a three-year lease. Three-year lease with the exception of that Goldsboro Business Campus, that's a year-to-year arrangement, so.
And I think that's why that's reflected in the price of that bid, because of that offer.
Right, because, I mean, he, he doesn't wanna do so much work on it, knowing that.
He can do improvements and refuges.
Right. And, um, uh, that particular farmer too was, um, uh, farming Park East, so he's familiar with our economic development situation, so. He, yeah, he's, he's familiar and he, he's easy to work with, he's very good with us, so, but.
Oh, good.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. And then we'll have, moving to number twelve, is a motion to approve the addition of Shepherd's Field Drive, Shepherd Court, Lamb Court, and Jackson Drive to the N C D O T state maintenance system. Any questions on that? And then number thirteen is a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven authorizing Wetzel Power Technics to use power techniques on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three for the Mount Olive Pickle drop in the town of Mount Olive contingent on approval by the Wayne County Inspections Department. Any questions on that? If not, we'll move with, next we have public comments, county managers' report, Board of Commissioners committee reports, closed session and adjournment.
Got the fourteen.
Well, we already went over those, fourteen was the, uh, uh, three seventy-five, uh, and fifteen is the consent to take the restrictions off lot six and seven.
We need to modify the listing that you have here on fourteen to include all the conditions.
Well, when I read it out, it'll say all that.
I understand, but so that we're on the same page, we need to change the wording of that on the consent agenda.
Okay, all right, thank you, ma'am.
As far as the usage.
Did we get? Did we get the, uh?
You're talking about more than what we have here?
Yes, because we, we need to put in the usage of that, that, that was our condition.
It can only be used for commercial.
Retail.
Hello.
Yeah. Just add this.
Yeah.
Not that.
Right.
Hey, um, thirteen, did we, did we find out about the, um, insurance policy thing?
I'm still waiting to hear back from, um, planning, so your approval will not mean anything until they approve.
Got it, inspections.
Yes, sir. Uh, not planning, yes, inspections.
Got it, okay. We need to go into closed session now.
Okay, all right.
Need a motion?
Do you have a motion? Y'all have, y'all have the vote, me and you, wait.
To discuss, uh, performance of some of your employees.
Do we need to clear the whole room or?
All right, I called at nine o'clock December the 5th. Order of commissioners meeting to open, welcome everybody. Hope everyone's got their Christmas shopping done. I sure do. All right. Vice Chairman Chris Gurley is going to do the invocation.
Let's by our heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for bringing us here on safety day. We ask that you give us the wisdom, each member of this board, the wisdom and the knowledge to carry out our decisions to will continue to move our county forward. Dear Lord, we ask that you bless those in our midst that have health issues, that your continued healing hand will be upon them. We also ask that you touch those that have lost loved ones over the past year, that the holiday season is tough this time of the year. We also thank you for sending your son, Jesus Christ, which is the real reason that we celebrate Christmas. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Here, were you picking up here?
Okay, we'll move into our organization meeting with the county attorney, E.B. Borden Parker, president.
I'll accept nominations for the election of chairman.
I make a motion, we select vice chair. Chris Gurley is chairman of the board for the year 2024.
Any other nominations? Not all in favor signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Mr. Gurley, congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
Meeting over to you.
Sir.
I'll turn the meeting over to you, congratulations.
Thanks, sir. I will entertain a motion for vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we nominate Commissioner Wayne Acock as vice chair.
Any further nominations?
I would like to nominate Antonio Williams for vice chair.
Any other nominations? Nomination's closed, we vote on all in favor of Wayne Acock, Commissioner Acock, as vice chair, if that it be known by raising your right hand. All in favor of Antonio Williams as vice chair, raise your right hand. Commissioner Wayne Acock will be the vice chair for the year 2024. All right, I'll have a motion to approve the minutes of November 21st, 2023.
I make a motion with proof.
All in favor, please cast your vote. All opposed, just say. Yep, all opposed, please do the same. Okay, Mr. Crumpers, do any, is that going through you?
Yeah, no, it ain't going through.
Ms. Barbara, have you got?
Yes.
Yes, Chairman, we have a few adjustments to the agenda. We want to add, under consent, a motion to appropriate $375,000 towards the Goldsboro Union Station stabilization project contingent on Save the Union Station Group raising $750,000 and the city of Goldsboro contributing $375,000 for the project. And based upon the future use of the property being retail, commercial, and/or for use as a train depot only, and that is with an appropriate budget amendment. That would be added as number 14 under consent. Adding number 15 would be, under consent, would be taking the restrictions or removing the restrictions for slot six and seven at Park East Industrial Park. And those are the only two changes I have.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for, a motion to approve the adjusted agenda.
So moved.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would prefer that number 14 be taken off for individual action. I think we had a lot of discussion about it, I think it's, I mean, y'all may have may have had some discussion this morning that I missed, but I think it's appropriate that it should be under individual action instead of consent agenda.
Okay, what's the consensus of the board to remove number 14 from the consent agenda and put it under unfinished business, I guess it would be?
Here we go, under unfinished.
Everybody. Well, one objection, we're gonna have to move it to. Is that what, so we're good, so all 14?
Yes, yes, the motion activity either way.
All right, got it. So we're going to unfinished business for number 14, move to unfinished business. And... Where's that gonna be put at?
It's gonna go back to where it was at, right?
But it's not up here.
It is on our screen, but it's not on paper.
They'll go back to.
They'll add unfinished business.
I'll have to add it back whenever we get.
So where's it going anywhere?
Unfinished is gonna go under...
It'll go right after this, actually, but if he's making a motion, you will need to vote to actually move that from consent again back to unfinished. So.
Anytime anybody objects to it being on to the consent, it automatically.
Automatically goes off.
So my question is, does it go after this before the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
All right, got it. All in favor of the adjusted agenda with the removal of number 14, which is in regards to the rail station, have a motion?
It don't need a motion, you said it automatically goes back.
No, no, no. Adjusted to approve the agenda and actually.
There's already a motion on the floor, Commissioner Wayne Smith, a motion.
He made the motion to approve.
Have we voted yet?
No, y'all are voting now.
I've already voted.
And again, mine did not show up, so I vote yes.
So now we go to unfinished business.
That is correct.
All right, Mr. Crump, can you state that again, the number?
A motion to appropriate $375,000 towards the Goldsboro Union Station stabilization project contingent on Save the Union Station Group raising $750,000 and the city of Goldsboro contributing $375,000 for the project. And based upon the future use of the property being retail, commercial, and/or for use as a train depot only with appropriate budget amendment.
I didn't have time to add it back to the agenda, so you guys will have to vote on this manually.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve what Mr. Crump has just read? All right, do you have any discussion?
Yes, I have a couple of quick questions. As far as, so we're going with what was suggested last, well, last meeting. What happened as far as the state approving this for, approving the rail from Wilmington to Goldsboro?
It hasn't been approved as of yet, we're still waiting on that.
It didn't even make it to the phase of being approved, because I've heard certain different things all over, so that's what I'm trying to figure out, was even in the stage of even being considered at this point, because I heard that Ms. Metz said it was two, which I heard it was also ended up being 12 that were submitted. So out of that 12, are we, is it a strong possibility that we're getting this, or is it not, because, you know what I'm saying, like, I mean, you want, you want good information, and right now at this point, I feel like it hasn't been a lot of information since Ms. Metz them came and presented two weeks ago.
So our, the last discussion we had was at the rail station, and the guy from, that's been involved in for 20 years, from the DOT Rail Division, I think it was, if I'm saying that correctly, he's the one that said that it was 12 instead and not just two. That the strong, the two routes from Salisbury to Asheville and Wilmington to Raleigh were the two that were favored, but they were not, it was not a definite selection, and I don't think that's happened yet either.
But he said 10 days, so it's been 10, it's been over 10 days, so I would still, you know, my thing is, if it hasn't, you know, I would like to have that information before I make a conscious vote, you know what I'm saying, and we don't have that information, you know, it's like we're voting in the blind on something, and then we're putting money into something that if they do raise the seven point, uh, 750,000, and then it's 375 from us, 375 from the city, you still have a building sitting there that's gonna need another $10 million worth of work. Where is that money gonna come from? So are we just throwing money at something? So are we just throwing money at something and there's going to be nothing after that for years to go for another five to 10 years when they talk about the rail again? You know what I'm saying? And I mean, if it's for just to stabilize the building, I understand that because if you're trying to preserve it, you know what I mean, for the future, I understand that. But I would like some more clarity and, and I don't feel like I, I don't know, maybe someone else on the board has gotten that clarity, but I haven't at this point.
We discussed this whole thing and I kind of, basically what you're saying, we just kind of went through the whole thing. But it was a consensus of the board to appropriate the 375 contingent on the private citizens raising $750,000. That's where we left it at in the agenda briefing. But you were.
But I'm just saying, I mean, I get that, but I'm just saying for, for us, we're taking taxpayers' money, we're putting in 375. What, what are they going to get back from it, if anything, if we don't have a definite plan on anything? You know what I'm saying? Or is it going to, you know, what? You know what I mean? I don't have an answer for that if someone asks me that question right now at this moment.
Well, my hope, my hope overall was that it's going to also improve, you know, the community in that particular area with the blight that's going on there. Those are my hopes overall, that that's going to change the dynamics over there and bring that area up.
Well, that's the thing about it, this 1.5 million isn't going to do any of that. It's just for infrastructure, to secure the building. So you're still talking another 10 million, it's got to come from somewhere to, to make any improvements, probably bare minimum, to get that building up to a standard of, you know, being operational. So I don't know, is that money planned on coming from us? Is it planned on coming from the city?
I think it was coming from a grant, you know, once, you know, it's considered, you know, the rail's coming through there is what I'm understanding.
But my thing is, we don't, we don't know any of that right now because we don't know what, what they're going to pick out of, out of, for North Carolina or wherever across the country, we don't know where they're going to pick. So we're still stuck within limbo, saying we're putting money into something that blindly and not knowing absolutely anything for the future with it outside of, you know, yes, we are stabilizing the building and I get the importance of that, but outside of that, what else do we have? Because we could put the 1.5 million into it and nothing happens over 10 years and we're right back at having to stabilize the building again. Or 15 years or 20 years or whatever it may be. So now you're kind of sort of stuck right back there in that same thing again because that's what happened years ago when they said the train was coming, money was invested into the building, money was invested to the roof when, when I and councilman, I mean, Commissioner Williams were on the city council. So, and it's like now you still have parts of the roof, it's going to probably have to be done over again also. So because the whole thing wasn't done like it was stated when we, when we first.
Based, based on our, based on our tour of it, last Tuesday, Wednesday, I think it was. The roof structure that they put in seems to be in fairly decent shape. The issue is stabilizing the building, basically getting the water out from up under it, stabilizing the foundation part. I, you know, I, I understand what you're saying and, I mean, I agree with, with, with part of it. I mean, I'm, I think it's going to cost more than six to eight million dollars to fix the building. That's just Chris's opinion. I think you're pretty much dead on between 12 and 15. Where that money's coming from, I don't know and I'm not, and I don't think this board is committing to any money other than the $375,000 to actually stabilize the building. I was hoping that we would have the commitment from the rail or whoever it comes from for the commitment of the Wilmington to Raleigh route established, being established back. I am for, personally, I am for establishing the tracks back so we can get freight from Wilmington to here. But this right now is actually to stabilize the building, so we need to, we need to vote yea or nay whether we're going to commit to $375,000 only after the group raises 750,000 and they got it in hand before we write the check. And I think, I don't think the city has wrote their check either. And I think it's under the same scenario.
Chip, can you, can you read what we discussed earlier this morning? Wasn't it also in the motion that we have a better handle on whether the tracks is going to be put back? That it's not?
No, no, sir.
Well, I'm, uh... I, I really think that needs to be addressed. We, we need some assurance on whether the tracks be put back in because, uh... Personally, I don't think we'll ever have to write the check.
The motion reads, motion to appropriate $375,000 towards the Goldsboro Union Stabilization Project contingent on save the Union Station Group raising $750,000 and the city of Goldsboro contributing $375,000 for the project. And based upon the future use of the property being retail, commercial, and/or for use as a train depot only with appropriate budget amendment. That's what was agreed on.
Will it go back on the tax books?
No, the city owns.
Yeah. I mean, my, my last, my last thing and we can vote is this. We were told, first of all, that we were only two. We weren't, that was, that was not the truth, it's 12. Also told that we were know, that they would decide in 10 days. If no one here had that answer, that was also not the truth. So I'm, we're, I'm sitting here voting blindly outside of stabilizing the building. And like I said, I understand the importance of that, you know? But it's so much more after that that we don't know. And, and that's the scary part to me because it's like, for me, I have citizens, it's, it's stuff that I could, we could spend 375 in my community that can have a direct impact and have an impact ASAP. But we're just throwing 375 at this with no impact that we might even know over the next five, 10, 20 years. We don't know. And that's, that's, that's kind of a big question to me. Like I said, I wanted, last week, we, two weeks ago, we all agree, we wanted to kind of sort of get a better understanding of it. Chip would look for the money in the budget and we would, that would also give us time to know whether they made a decision within 10 days. Where's that decision at?
Well, we're, I mean, we don't make that decision.
I know we don't make it. I'm asking who, whoever was supposed to make that decision? Where is that decision? If it was supposed to be in 10 days?
That goes back to the property, the federal government too, they don't move it as quick as, as, as we'd like them to. So.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Let me, let me make one comment first. Oh, I'm going to ask you a question. The grants that were submitted and used on that building, is there, if, if something were to happen to that building, is that going to have a direct effect on us receiving grants in the future? Does anybody know to answer that question? Do what now?
Those grants did not come to the county, they went to the city.
Went to the city, said we don't have any, they say this is not a detriment on us as far as grants down the road. Okay.
Mr. I, I think we're really overcomplicating this thing. Basically, there is a group of very committed citizens that are coming together and wanting to save Union Station. They have identified 1.5 million dollars in cost to stabilize this building, an historic building. They're saying we'll raise three quarters of a million dollars if the city will put in 375 and the county will put in 375. It's a stabilization effort, that's all it is. We're not talking about the, the tracks coming in, we're not talking about any of that. Yes, they are looking at that in the future, but we're just talking about the building and the stabilization of that building. And I'm just saying this, if there are enough citizens in this county that are willing to put three quarters of a million dollars of their dollars into it, I'm more than willing to put in 375. So I think that's the question that it comes down to. So let's not think about all of the rail and whether or not we're going to get the tracks replaced and so forth. It's stabilization of this building. So I would ask for support, as the city has already done, to pledge that we'll put in 375 if they'll raise the $750,000. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Has any other board member got any comments?
I feel the same way too, does. I mean, you've got people that are reaching out to, to put money in and you might have things like this come along. Well, the citizens would say, well, why should we? You know, it don't ever get carried in the feather. So I'm willing to support the ones that are trying to raise the money and let's get this. And hopefully it will be stabilized and hopefully the rail will come through, but we've got to take a chance on this building.
First of all, I want to, I want to thank Commissioner Foster for being strong and passionate about how he feels that money could be spent in other areas, which is true. It is true. A lot of times there's things in our communities that we don't get, you know, and there's needs there. So I don't, you know, I don't think that anyone should look at Commissioner Foster, you know, he's doing what he's supposed to do for his particular district and.
Well, maybe this might start a trend.
Well, I mean, I would just say this, and, and, and we can vote, is that, you know, I don't think that, I understand that private citizens are coming in and putting in this money and that's great for those that can afford to do it. But what do you do in neighborhoods where those that can't afford to do it? Where are we putting money at then? So when, when, when I come before the board for something, then I expect it to be done the same way this is done for those that have the money to put in, for those that don't have the money to put in. So I want, I want that statement to be remembered when it's time to vote for something that I asked for and it'd be coming soon.
Has anybody got anything else?
And just keep, keep in mind now, you know, we're at the end of, almost the end of the year, so we're looking at probably this not being in, probably in next year's budget. Is that correct?
Probably not.
And, uh, I, I still, I still don't think we'll ever write the check.
Has anybody got anything else?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to appropriate.
We've already got a motion.
Yeah, we've got a motion.
So all in favor of a motion to allocate $375,000 for the rail station after they raised the 750,000 privately, but cast your vote, yea or nay?
I didn't come up with my. I'm, I'm going to vote yes because I have a board backing me now with something that I want submitted. No, it didn't.
It's the best part, trends, citizens pulling in for other things.
Can you pull mine back up? Maybe I might change my vote.
Do you want me to change it for you?
Yeah, reluctantly.
Okay. I'll change it.
And that would be very reluctantly on my part.
All right, so that's reassessed and now we go to our nine o'clock or 9:27 public hearing.
Correct. Public hearing to receive public comments on a request to rezone 19 acres from RA 20 to R 10 for property located off of US Highway 70 West identified as tax parcel 2671904358. The board may take action after the following of public hearing. Now I'll turn it over to our planning director, Barry Gray.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Barry.
This is your first public hearing today. This is a rezoning request, so of course you sit as the board of commissioners for this. The rezoning is from RA 20, which is residential agricultural, the 20 designates basically square footage for a lot, so it's a 20,000 square foot lot. And the request is to rezone to R 10, which would be kind of a smaller lot, a higher density type development. The property currently is vacant. The adjacent zoning includes RA 20, which would be behind and beside of this property, which is also vacant. And the property to the north is within the city limits of Goldsboro and zone SC for commercial use and R 6 for high density residential. The growth strategies map with Wayne County does indicate that this is an urban transition area which promotes higher density residential development. Two things that you need to consider with a rezoning is whether it's consistent with the land use plan and whether the request is reasonable and in the public interest. So with consistency with the land use plan, staff's opinion is that the request is consistent with policies 1.9, 3.8, 4.4, 4.6, and 7.3, which we've listed in your staff report, considering that the proposed zoning is compatible with the urban transition area of the land use plan and higher density and mixed use development are concentrated in this area with higher capacity road networks and existing infrastructure. And for it being reasonable and in the public interest, staff's opinion is that the request is reasonable and in the public interest since the land use plan identifies this area as urban transition and the adjacent property to the north is mixed use and higher density as well. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, Barry, you brought up a question about the road coming in there, I think at the pre-agenda.
Right.
Could you explain that again, please?
Yes, this, it is directly on 70 Highway, but there is a road that comes in there. If you're familiar with Goshen Medical Center, AID Air Development, there's a road that comes in there. It'll circle around, kind of behind there, and then it will also eventually come out there at, right beside DOT. So it'll almost be a loop type of a situation there. And so it'll access through the AID Air Development where Goshen.
I had a question about it, so I want to make sure it was out there.
Any other questions? Let me, first off, we got anybody signed up?
No one is signed up to speak for this particular.
Barry, I noticed one application, the applicant stated aging population. Is it going to be like senior housing?
That is what they're targeting, is the senior housing, probably a higher density. In with a rezoning, you really can't take in consideration of particular use, but likely with the R 10, it'll probably be a smaller lots of division where there's less yard to take care of, kind of a smaller footprint. But that is, that development itself, the whole development, AID Air Development back in there is geared towards your aging community.
You said about 90 units?
Do I? I'm sorry.
About 90 units?
Yeah, this would, if they do move forward with that residential development, it'll likely be 90, it'll be up to 99 is what they could do.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments?
Well, just one question, I mean, because I was a little confused about, you said the road by Goshen is going to come all the way out?
Right.
Okay.
It'll, yeah, it'll end up circling around and then come out there by where DOT, where DOT's driveway is, the maintenance building. It's not in yet, but whenever they do complete this development, they'll have that connection in.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Really what you're saying is, tell away trial, we would just extend further around and, okay.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Any further discussion? Most pleasure to board on this action. Public hearing closed. Now. Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve the rezoning of 19 acres from RA 20 to R 10 for the property located off of US 70 identified as tax parcel 2671904358.
All right, got a motion on the floor? Please cast your vote, yea or nay?
I haven't come up.
Yes. All right, now we're going to recess the board of commissioners meeting and reconvene the Wayne County Board of Adjustments.
Okay. Board of Adjustment, public hearing to receive public comment on a special use permit for Piney Grove Solar Energy Facility. I remind the board that they may take action following this public hearing.
Ms. Carroll, do you want to swear in everybody who's want to speak at the same time?
Yes, I was going to say we have, we're doing Piney Grove first, so I need Ryan Nally, I think, or David.
David Vincent?
Actually, the applicant did not sign in. We have a lot of experts here.
Okay.
Who present?
How do we want to do this?
They supposed to sign in at nine, what?
Um, is that okay with you, Barry? Okay.
Who all is going to speak?
If they didn't sign in.
Okay, first ones that signed up, who signed? Or did Dylan that signed up? Okay, you'll come up here with Barry, those that signed up to speak for the public hearing. I have to swear to you.
May I? That's the public speaking, public comment, we need to make our case first.
But I still have to swear everybody in, I was just going to do that at once. But is that okay or should I wait?
I'm talking about in terms of the order of speaking.
Right.
Okay.
No, 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 I'm, they're going to speak after, but I'm just going to swear everyone
in.
Who's speaking from your group?
Just be on the agenda.
All four?
Yes, four.
And you? Okay, let me give you guys first then, and then I'll, I'll do the citizens next, okay? Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Let me present the candidates.
You're next.
Yes, now, now I need the rest of you that are planning on speaking today, that signed up for it. If you did not sign up, you do not need to speak. Okay? All right. Place your left hand on the bottom of your right thigh.
I'm squeezing those in, we're so sorry. There's a second half that we needed.
Stretch it a little bit. I think they're good. All right. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Mr. Chairman, if you proceed, I'll be glad to do so.
Okay, you're right ahead.
All right. This is our second public hearing, but our first for the Board of Adjustment. This is for a special use permit for a solar energy facility, also referred to as Piney Grove Solar. Developer, applicant is Renewable Energy Services. This is in New Hope Township in the vicinity of Piney Grove Church Road, St. John Church Road, and Sutton Road. If you're familiar with that area. This energy facility is 67 megawatts. It will be located on, there's 865 acres within the tracks that are part of this, but 7, 375 built-upon acres. So because of some wetlands and floodplain and so forth that they're not using on those tracks, the total area of the, of the tracks themselves, the parcels, is 865, but the built-upon area is 375.
375, so 865, and the 375, so what part of that is wooded, cleared, you know?
Oh, now that I don't, out of the...
Well, maybe they can answer that question if they're doing that thing.
Yeah, they might be.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
So this is, because this is in the outer horizontal zoning area in our zoning ordinance because of Seymour Johnson and our airport overlay district, it does require special use, so this is why the Board of Adjustment is meeting today because of that designation. Also because of that, it does require that we send comments or send this request to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base so that we can receive comments back from them, and we have. We do have comments that we've included as conditions, and so I'll outline those shortly. Since this is a special use, our zoning ordinance does list findings of facts that have to be made, and I will read those for the record, if you'll bear with me, that the proposed use does not affect adversely to general plans for physical development of the county and will not be contrary to the purposes stated in these regulations. The proposed use will not adversely affect the health and safety of the county residents. It will not be detrimental to the use or development of adjacent properties or other neighborhood uses. The proposed use will not be affected adversely by existing uses and will be placed on a lot of sufficient size to satisfy the space requirements of said use. The proposed use will not constitute a nuisance or hazard because of the number of persons who will use such a facility, the vehicular movement, or the noise or fume generation, and the proposed use shall be subject to the minimum dimensional requirements of the district in which it is to be located and shall conform to the off-street parking and loading regulations. So those are the findings of facts that have to be made as a special use. Additionally, since this is a special use, you can impose conditions of approval on this to ensure that you protect the health and safety of the community or protect property values to ensure that these findings of facts are met. You can apply conditions. We have included already two, actually, there are three conditions that came from Seymour Johnson Air Force Base, and one is that, and I'll read those for the record as well. In comparing to yellow and green glare within the report, Seymour Johnson's report, or the solar report, with and without anti-reflective coating, which is ARC, on the smooth glass photovoltaic solar panels, we concluded that the ARC panels significantly reduced the amount of yellow glare, therefore, we highly recommend such materials be installed to reduce the glint and glare exposed to the Seymour Johnson Air Force Base in transient air crews. Second condition, the project owner should partner with the United States Department of Agriculture representatives at Seymour Johnson Air Force Base to allow USDA access to the project to observe hazardous wildlife conditions and advise on mitigation strategies to reduce bird attractants. And then finally, the project owner should implement long-term wildlife mitigation efforts on-site as part of the development plan. And I will say, the planning board has reviewed the site plan and has determined, made a recommendation for the site plan itself in terms of the design. There are a number of supporting documents that you have, and I want to enter those right now into the record, including the staff report, and those include the area map, the approved site plan, the special use permit application, the findings of fact response from the applicant, the buffer plan, the decommissioning plan, the health and safety assessment, property impact study, landscape plan, and the comments, of course, from Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. So with all that said, I'll be glad to answer any questions, and as mentioned, the applicant is also present to respond as well.
What is the buffer? I want to set back on the buffer for this, Barry.
These, it varies. In some cases, it's 60 feet, like from a road. There are other places where it may be 50, but several of the residential areas, like up there at Dobbs County Estates, they've increased that buffer, I think to 250 feet. And so there have been some places where they've made some adjustments there, but typically it is either 60 or 50 feet or 25, if they have a vegetative buffer, the buffer itself is a 25-foot wide buffer, planted buffer, but, but those would be the typical setbacks. But when there's residential, like at Dobbs County Estates, they did increase that up to around 250.
Who maintains the buffer?
Those buffers...
The tree dies, or...
Yeah, those buffers should be maintained by the applicant. It really just depends on, I guess, how they work it out with the, with the actual property owners, if they're leasing, if they're going to lease that part of it, if they're not. But typically, anything within that leased area, the applicant would, would maintain that or should.
I don't know, I see a lot of solar places and the trees look like they sat there a while and a lot of them die, and I don't see many replacements or anything.
Right, right.
And the new limbs that they're putting on for Seymour Johnson, is this something new, or is this something they put on all of them now?
Well, it's new for, in terms of our comments, but this is the first comment we've received from Seymour related to that, so...
I knew I hadn't heard this before.
Yeah, that is a new one, so we haven't seen that before. Now, they may automatically be doing that in some of the other ones already, but it's the first time we've actually had that comment from Seymour.
Any other questions, Barry?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Is that a requirement, or are they a condition?
We have put that as a condition of approval.
We have.
Yes, sir.
All right. Now, in regards to the 250-foot buffer here from the residential, is that just land area or are there plannings that are going to be there to screenings as such?
Yeah, that is, well, it is, of course, land area, and the applicant can probably address this in more detail, but typically with that, with the 250-foot buffer, if they do an opaque fence, they don't have to do the actual vegetative buffer. If they don't, do not do an opaque fence, usually it'd be vegetation, but they can respond better in terms of exactly what their plans are for, for that, but...
But these plans don't actually show any plannings or screenings, does it?
Yeah, on this one, it does not show, it just shows a 250-foot setback. It does not show an actual vegetative buffer there.
I mean, as I recall, that's generally open land there, and I'm just wondering why there would not be a condition of some type of a screening, either planting or fence screening.
Right, and they may be planning, they may be willing to propose that.
But right now, they're not...
Okay.
All right, but at this point, they're not showing.
Okay.
The other question I have is the, I noticed, this is a large track, but I, is there any other areas where this is adjoining residential?
There are a few residential properties in terms of, like a residential development or subdivision, there's not, but there is, I know, like on Sutton Road, there's one small home there, kind of adjacent to that.
And is there a screening there?
There, let's see here.
Like I say, it's a large track.
Yeah. They're not showing that on there for that screening. But other than that, I think that's the only one that I see in terms of having a direct, you know, being directly adjacent. There may be a few others that I don't spot on here, but...
But from my understanding, according to our ordinance, we in fact would require a screening between, if there's a residential involved, is that correct?
Well, we would if there's a residential, if it's a, what we call a high-density residential, or if, you know, you have a certain number of residential within a certain area, a certain amount, we would require the screening. Or in this case, they would have to do either opaque fence...
Right.
Or screening...
Right.
In a case like this, so they would have to do one or the other, unless, of course, it becomes a condition of approval, then they would do screening in that case, but...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Barry, Barry, all of the decommission processes included in this?
It is, yes, sir.
Okay. Right, now, I ask the question to the elephant in the room. How much farmland is this going to take out of production?
I don't have that number with me, but I'm guessing, looking at the amount, the 375, I'm saying a good majority of what they're developing in this one probably is going to be farmland.
Let me ask you another thing, Barry. I noticed there's a lot of cleared land that maybe will not perk in the community.
Right.
Could solar panels be put on these properties where the timber has been cut over?
Yeah, if it's been cut over and doesn't perk, I mean, you could put solar panels on it like that, as long as the soils aren't wetlands, you know what I mean, or floodplain, those type of things, yeah, you could potentially do solar panels on soils that typically wouldn't perk. There's a possibility there.
There's a lot of farmland that's been cut.
Right.
But it will not perk to build on.
Right.
And this is some of the property I'd like to see solar be put on.
Right.
And everything.
There's a whole lot of productive farmland in this plot right here. There is. So the green dots...
Of the wetlands.
Those delineated wetlands.
Oh, right, yeah, that...
So that means it can be put on that?
No, those wetlands, they're, they've, Dylan showed those, those are, they cannot put anything on wetlands.
Okay, so the, the, the X part, I guess, well, are you looking at the same screen we're looking at?
I think so, yeah.
The, the X part, is that what they're talking about putting it at?
Right, yeah, the...
So that's, that's majority farmland then?
That is.
Yep, this one right here. The one, the, hold on, I'll tell you which one. The site plan for Piney Grove.
Yeah.
So, so the 865 acres is what the actual solar facility is supposed to acquire? Is that, am I hearing that correct?
From what I, yeah, that's their, their leased area, that they're leasing, but about 300, what was that number?
375.
375 is what they're actually going to be using, because a large part of that, like the one with the wetlands, you know, that's a large area within wetlands, of course, that's taken out of the area where they can put solar for farm, or solar panels, so, you know, what you're left with is 375 acres out of that leased area.
So, but basically, that's majority of crop land?
Right, yeah, yeah.
That produces?
Yeah, it appears that most of what they're going to be actually using for panels is, is farmland.
And they cannot put it in any wetland or floodplain, 100, 500-year floods, is that correct?
Well, 500-year, you could, but there's not a lot of 500-year, but yeah, wetlands you cannot. That's not a local regulation, that's corporate engineers, yeah.
The reason I'm asking is the river's right across Piney Grove.
Right.
So I just didn't know, I figured that would be more, between the 500, is the 500-year flood on, well, map on this right here or not? I just see the 100-year. We have not had many 500-year floods in the past, but that was before all the asphalt and concrete was for the Wake County and Owen County. And Wayne County too, for that matter.
Yeah, and there is some 500-year, there's, and there are panels within the 500-year, but not the 100-year. FEMA doesn't regulate the 500-years, so there's no requirement for any sort of elevation or anything within the 500, but...
Oh, and I guess this is, I got some other questions I need to ask the, going to put experts, I guess, so I don't mean that ugly Barry.
Oh, you're fine.
Every winner step down.
Yeah.
Anybody else got any questions? Barry, on this site plan, it says approximate overhead electric line. Is that a line that's already existed?
It is. That is the overhead transmission line that cuts through the property. That's what, from what I understand, that's what makes these tracks attractive, is the overhead power line, because it goes cut through the property and they can tie directly into that overhead transmission.
I didn't, I didn't think a line could go across the panels. I mean, I know of another case that the facility had to be sized down because of power lines. I didn't think you could run a power line across those panels.
Yeah. Oh, and there may be, it's hard to see, but there, it doesn't appear as though they'll put panels directly under the power lines, just because of the scale, it is hard to see, but, but they will be on both sides of that.
Then, Mr. Chairman, I got one final question for Barry. Wetlands designation is up in the air right now. In the event that any of this designated wetlands is reduced in size, would this allow them to go ahead and extend the solar panels on that area without coming back for a new site plan?
Yes, they potentially could, since it's part of the leased area, and they're showing that it's part of what they would like to develop if they could, it could. Plus, I think the ordinance allows for, there's a percentage increase that you can do without having to come back. It may be 10%, I'm not sure, but there's a small percentage, but...
Would that have to be 10% of 375, 865, and then had to come back?
Yeah, so there's a potential, it just depends on how much area comes out of those wetlands, but, but typically, I don't think you're going to see a significant change. There may be some adjustments with those lines, but I don't think it would be significant enough to make a big difference.
But out of the 865, if, as an example, they, they had re-designated 80 acres, which is less than 10%, they could go ahead and develop that without coming back.
Right, since it's part of the leased area and they're including it as part of the special use, they could.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any other questions? I just, one, one comment, I, you know, I'm, I was raised on a farm, farming at an early age, but if you were raised on a farm, it never goes away. I just, I just, I just got a concern with taking this much farmland out of production. And I'm not, I'm not against, you know, I'm not against solar facilities, but this is the largest one that has been brought before, it's the best I can remember, and this, this is taking some prime farmland out of production. I just, you know, that's just my personal feeling, I'm not going to say, you know, well, I will or won't vote for it, but I just, I'm concerned about taking this much farmland out of production.
Why are you all having certain selections like this, this, this much farmland? I mean, why is it so, I'm like Commissioner Acoch, I live on a farm too, and it just breaks my heart when I see this much land. I mean, like I said a few minutes ago, we got a lot of cut-over timberland that couldn't perk to build houses on. of cut-over timber land that couldn't perk to build houses on. Why couldn't some of that be looked at?
First of all, for the record, I'm Tom Terrell. I'm the attorney for RES, Renewable Energy Services-
Yeah, we met before you.
...which owns Piney Grove. Thank you very much, it's good to be back. I get to know everybody here in Wayne County. The bailiff at the door actually recognized me when I was-
Well, don't shave your beard, we won't recognize you.
I played Santa Claus for the law firm office this Thursday, and then it will be shaved. Let me, to answer that question, solar companies like RES began by doing the 40 and 50-acre projects, because that is why you could get regulated. The whole system was changed in 2017, when, and I'll just go ahead and say it, Duke Energy's lobbyist persuaded the legislature for, to allow Duke to control all of solar development in North Carolina. They've actually, that control has actually gotten stricter in the last year or so. Duke set up a system whereby companies wanting to do solar have to come to Duke, and that's, they engage in what is called a request for proposal, RFP, where they propose the land, they propose the jurisdiction, they show the transmission line that goes across it, they have, they have to show what they, their, what they'll sell the power to Duke for to make it competitive, but as part of that requirement, they now have to do large farms. Duke will not accept a 5-megawatt farm anymore. They will only accept-
Which is acreage-wise.
I'm sorry?
Which is acreage-wise.
Acreage-wise, that gets up to anywhere from 300-
5 megawatts is 50 acres.
50 acres, okay.
I'm sorry, 5 megawatts is 50 acres, I'm sorry, but to do the, the current size, you have to, basically, if you use the 5 megawatts as 50 acres, you just do the math on that, and that is not this company driving it, that's Duke Energy driving it. Now, I'm going to answer that as a farmer. I am the manager of the LLC of my family's cattle farm in Randolph County. We have 752 acres, and we lose money every year. I don't like to say that publicly, but it is true. And my dad died three weeks ago, and because of that, the family is trying to take the emotion out of it. We can't feed a farm out of our pockets. This is not just my experience, this is the experience that's happening with families all over North Carolina. Now, what I typically see, when I go around with different companies, are families like my family, who are looking to make a transition. We either can't farm because we're all moved off the farm, it's not what we do, you know, we're doing engineering or school teaching or something like that, but we have, we don't want to lose the farm. I grew up stringing barbed wire fans, I have pregnancy-tested cows, I have drilled soybeans and sorghum, we've, there's a few things I haven't done in farming, and I have an emotional attachment to that land. My children grew up on that land. We want something to preserve it. We have a transmission line that goes right across the middle of our back acreage, but it's a 500-kilowatt, and that's too powerful. But we looked into having solar so that we could put the farm into a use that would actually be profitable, and we could have something so our children, for the remaining part, could have their children, teach them the values. That's what we see all over the place. The landowners are here, you've heard from them, many of them are telling you they are multi-generational Wayne County citizens. They've been paying the taxes that have built your schools, they have been sitting in the pew on Sunday morning, they are Wayne County people to the core, but their property, for whatever reason, is now in transition. We don't ask that question. But that sort of answers the question about the size and the farmland and, and that issue. Now, maybe now is the time for us to start our, our formal presentation, if that would be appropriate. We do have-
I got one more question.
Yes, sir.
Where did the electrical co-ops play into this?
I'm sorry?
Electrical co-ops, where do they play into this?
The electrical co-ops are different. I actually represent the, the Umbrella Organization, the Electrical Membership Corporation of North Carolina. The electrical co-ops have to purchase their power from Duke at wholesale and then sell it to other customers. They are the only ones, they're regulated differently, but they can still do the, in fact, I just did one in North Hampton County, that is one-half of a megawatt. Now, that's almost unheard of. The co-ops are moving to battery storage more than panels, but co-ops are an important part of the equation, but, but they don't have to do the large.
Right, I know our co-op here, I think it basically decided not to participate, but then they were forced into it.
Yeah, some, some of them have not. Most of the co-ops do have solar to expand-
Yeah, I know, but, I mean, my understanding was that they were forced into it.
That is not my understanding. I've, I've worked with the Umbrella Organization, they want to do it as a means of broadening what they do, because solar is the cheapest means of production, and so it lowers part of their cost.
Well, the, the cost factor is, that's an opinion.
All, all I'm telling you, I'm just quoting the people who are having to pay the money and who hire me. I, I don't-
Let's, let's go ahead and do your formal presentation, then we'll ask some more questions.
Okay, that would be great. We could hand off some notebooks, um, Erica. I'm going to apologize, I'll get one to, I'm going to apologize for the size of this particular notebook.
My goodness.
I asked my secretary to put the Glint and Blair study in, and I did not say, "Don't copy the appendix," and that appendix is about four inches thick, dollar-sized.
All right, I'll get back with you in about a month after I read this.
But we, we do take your standards and process very seriously. I'll repeat, since we're now starting, Tom Terrell, Fox, I'm a law firm, and I represent Renewable Energy Services. I'm really glad to be here for, on behalf of Renewable Energy, because this is the company that has been in North Carolina from day one. Tom and his brother Matt and their father were here, started in 2013, before any quality solar was anywhere. They're homegrown, they're not a company coming out of Houston or New York, they are of North Carolina, and this is the company that best listens to the neighbors, they do the most informative neighborhood meetings, they change their site plans in response to feedback from folks they have, they meet. Let me also say, I meant to say before I started, it's always good to see, Borden Parker, he's a good colleague now, legal colleague of mine, Andrew Neal, I've got to know, but I just need to say while I'm standing here, there's no lawyer in North Carolina who gets around to as many counties as I do, there just can't be. But Barry Gray is the only planning director who answers his phone. I'm telling you, if y'all don't know how different that is, the planning department is the place where economic development, when people want to invest in your community, they want to come in and create jobs, the planning department's the first phone call, and sometimes it's two or three days before you can get through to somebody. Just letting you know, that's economic development. We appreciate it, but it just needs to, to be said. There are several owners who are here, if you're here as an owner of this project, would you stand up, please? These, these are folks, again, who-
I thought you meant the phone.
I'm sorry?
I thought you meant farmland, sorry.
Oh, sorry, well, well, I, there are several owners here, and they have written to you. Before I walk you through the notebook, I want to address a couple of other things. You had asked about the wetlands. This company and all solar developers are required to abide by 100% of the restrictions imposed on them by the Clean Water Act. That's water, stream buffers, wetland protections, sedimentation, and erosion control. It's just like a home, a subdivision, a shopping center, industrial project, they have to follow them equally. Now, with respect to whether, if the wetlands were to shrink or anything, in theory, they could increase up to 10%, but there is a, a higher level state restriction on size. When they go through the regulatory process, they tell Duke Energy what the size of this project will be in terms of its power output. We think in acreage at this level, but Duke and the Utility Commission are thinking in terms of power output. So once they say to the Utility Commission at Duke, "This is going to be a certain power," they can't then expand panels and go above that. So it's, it's a higher regulatory process that keeps this from, from them expanding into those wetland areas.
So what you're saying on the 865, that you're, you'll be covering 865 acres, but only 375-ish will be in solar?
That is correct. That's correct. There's, there is a difference between the lease area and the coverage area. A lot of-
Let me ask you a question. So the leased area, is the, is the landowners getting the same amount of, per acre, per acre price?
I, I have, I, I want to let, Mr., I don't talk to the landowners. Mr. Delafield's going to follow me, and he can answer those questions. The landowners, I think, will tell you they are very appreciative of this opportunity.
I'm just asking for my, so I know, you know, how your thing's kind of laying out.
Just, if I could just walk you quickly through the notebook, the, we take your process very seriously, and that's why we present you with this information. We have, the first tab is the, is the permit application. We show you that the findings of fact, that's the second tab. We've addressed each one in multiple paragraphs with solid information. The third tab, though, is the summary of the law on special use permits. I think most of you know this, Mr. Parker can address these questions if you have them, but these are not opinions, not opinion-based, they're not based on feelings and emotions, and that somebody just doesn't want it. We have the burden of showing you scientific evidence or facts that we hit at your standards. If somebody doesn't like it, they have to do the exact same thing, because Wayne County has already decided, in its table of permitted uses, that a solar farm is a proper use in this location if we meet those standards. The zoning site plan is the next tab. Mr. Delafield is going to address that too, but there is an area in yellow that shows where the added buffers will be, especially near residential, but the most important thing about this site plan is it shows you that not only do they meet your setbacks and meet your vegetative buffers, but in almost every place on the site plan, they exceed the standards on both. And you will hardly find a company anywhere that does that. The next tab, landscape buffers, if you pull that out, it is the best visual, this is done by a registered landscape architect, these renderings, they're sealed, that they show you that when these planted portions reach maturity, they're whole, they are designed to conceal all panels. The next tab is proposed technology.
So are they irrigated?
I'm sorry?
Is that, are those plants irrigated?
They are not. They are all indigenous, they, the landscaping plan always includes plants that are native to the area, but they are part of the zoning conditions, so that if they were to get a blight or not be watered or taken care of, they are, they have to be replaced. I did say that correctly, non-irrigation, that's correct. Most companies don't irrigate, but they, they do make sure they're-
They still got to have water to live, I mean, they're just like, they still got to have water to live, I'm just asking.
Yes.
So in the wet areas, y'all, y'all planning for that as well?
I'm sorry?
In the wet areas, I mean, like the conifers not going to live in a wet area, so y'all planning on that as well?
This, there will be a very detailed landscape plan done by the landscape architect close to that time.
Where's the landscape architect from?
Raleigh. They use Kimley Horn. Kimley Horn is one of the most noted firms in the southeast. This is not a fly-by-night company.
Yeah, I deal with them, I know who deals with them.
Yeah.
All right, go ahead.
But I will say, it is extremely expensive to do any company if they don't do it right and have to come back and replace. And that's, so the financial incentive for companies like RES is to do it right, and to meet the standard, and to make sure there are no notices of violation, so that they don't build that reputation as the company that doesn't do what they say, and it follows you. They have one of the best reputations of doing what they say. You can ask around to places they've been, everything I'm telling you is, can be borne by the experiences of other companies. As to the health and safety report and the market impact study, y'all seen this before. This is, we're plowing the same ground, the bottom line on those are that Kirkland Associates is now described by many people as the country's leading expert in the effect of solar on adjoining properties, and they now have data from 22 states. It is 100% consistent in terms of what it shows, and it's basically, you can't see, when you can't see it, you can't hear it, and it's, and all, it just doesn't have an effect. The, and on health and safety, we now have tens of thousands of solar farms in this country, and the scientific evidence on all is that they're safe. Now, you can get political opinions to the contrary, but the scientific evidence is that they are safe. I'm just going to ask you to avoid that glare study that's taken up so much of your book. There is a summary that says they're okay, Seymour Johnson is okay. The conditions asked by Seymour Johnson, this company, let's make sure it's 100% on the record. We think it's in writing already, but if not, those conditions will be adopted as part of the permit. That is, and upon approval by this board, if that is the board's decision, they will be clearly in an order that Seymour Johnson's-
So you don't have any writing here?
I'm sorry?
You don't have any writing yet?
We thought that we did have it, I just asked Mr. Delafield if we don't, it, Mr. Parker always reviews orders on solar farms that, when I send them, and may I assume that you'll make sure that I dot those i's, and then the letter from Seymour Johnson, and then decommissioning is the last tab. Decommissioning has changed, it's, the state has sort of taken over the decommissioning process, so we're in that transition period, either the state will require bond, or it will be bonded with the landowners, but in any event, it is a facility that will, that whose removal will be bonded.
Has it always been 40 years?
I'm sorry?
Has it always been 40 years of decommissioning, you know, the lifetime of the system? It was in the book?
40 years for decommissioning?
Well, lifetime, you know, it's-
Lifetime, I'll be careful how I say it's a squarely thing. You have three different measures of lifetime. You have the lease measurement, as to what the lease says, the lease typically goes to 20 years, but then there is the panel lifetime. All of these panels, in order to get financing, have to be the top-rated panels on the market, so you then have the lifetime of the panel, which is 25 years, but you have the third measure of lifetime is that you have five-year, typically, five-year additional increments to the company, and, so that would be the third measure, and it's not uncommon for there to be four, five-year increases. So those are the three different measures. I'm sorry, it does kind of get confusing, but-
I was just going with what you had in the back of the book-
Yeah.
-on decommissioning.
I'd like to turn, I know there might be questions of me, I can come back up, but- but Mr. Delafield can answer, uh, a lot of questions, and then I think we can cover it more, uh, in detail here, and then on the next project, we could probably go a lot faster.
I've got one more question for you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
In Wayne County, uh, like I said earlier, I was raised on a farm. There's no such thing as a solar farm. They don't grow anything. They have solar facilities in Wayne County.
Uh, let me tell you, um, I like to actually, that you said that. Solar farm is the colloquial term that I don't know how it got started. I, I, as somebody who, uh, I will, in fact, I will leave here and go to my farm to do a quick tour before I go back to my office. Um, I'm with you. I say solar facility typically when I'm writing. Um, but I'd say, but solar farm, sometimes people understand what you say.
It would probably be to your advantage to say facility in Wayne County.
Tell you what, I'm going to try to go through the rest of today's hearings without saying farm again.
Yeah.
I was going to bring that up, but I appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Tom Delafield. I'm Director of Project Development for Remote Energy Services. I'm here representing Piney Grove Solar. I can address some of the questions that have been asked. I can do it ahead of time or after the presentation. Maybe the presentation will be.
Go ahead, the presentation first.
Yeah, we'll answer some of them. So, just a quick agenda. I'll talk through the project overview, uh, some of its specifics, some impacts and benefits, and touch briefly on how the project conforms with the comprehensive plan. So, Piney Grove Solar was originated in September of last year. It is large enough, uh, to power approximately 8,400 homes at 67 megawatts. The facility may incorporate battery storage, but that will be at Duke Energy's discretion. The facility will produce approximately $3.1 million in net new taxes over its 40-year timeframe. Um, and we are requesting a special use permit with a five-year vesting period. And I can address that later if you'd like, and the project, again, complies with the comprehensive plan. We've talked about this a little bit. The project, uh, the total project area is 865 areas, acres, meaning that is all of the acreage that is under option by the project. And the area that will ultimately be inside the fence line is more like 350 acres. These are not definite numbers, but just to give you a sense of, you know, the scales and kind of the general proportions that, uh, will end up being built upon. So, the way, basically, the delta between those two numbers is a result of what you, what you start with when you sign up the land and then what you end up with after you do the environmental assessments. So, you have some data going into, uh, you know, the signing up land, but you don't know definitively what's going to be usable or not. And so, you go out there and you do a wetland delineation and you come back with a couple hundred acres of wetlands. And so, that means that that land is not going to be, uh, built upon. It will be turned back to the landowner. I understand it's already been replanted in pines, and so, that land will simply remain in his control. It will not be under the control of the project, uh, in large part. Um, and so, there also is a little bit of buffer, you know, the setbacks and buffer areas are also leased by the project. And so, those are a small increment of numbers, or, excuse me, acres, maybe, you know, 25 to 50 that are in addition to the area inside the fence. Um, and so, those two numbers kind of are a bit different than the total project area, which is, again, just how much land the project has to look at. Um, but it's about sort of finding a big canvas and then, you know, paring it down based on the constraints of the area, that, again, being wetlands, floodplains, um, and threatening endangered species habitats, things like that.
And tell me again what, uh, what do acreage-wise in panels, once again?
So, when we submit the, so Duke has a, this RFP process, and you can submit them anything under 75 megawatts. So, looking at the, uh, land that we have available to build on, we submitted to them a project at 67 megawatts. That's how much land we think, uh, we can build on, and that's kind of the power output based on the land that we think we can build on. So, let's say that, to your point, the, uh, Supreme Court, uh, lessens or the, you know, guidance from the US Army Corps on wetlands changes. Uh, we are still capped at that power output. So, we might, you know, optimize the system a little bit, make the rows, you know, make the power production ideal, uh, but we cannot increase the output of the facility up to 75 megawatts after the fact. Once you're locked in with Duke, you can only go down, you can't go up. So, if there's, realistically, if there's, uh, a change in the project size, it's going to go down, not up.
But what I'm asking is, what is the actual, what's the minimum that, that Duke will accept?
Oh, um, the minimum that they will accept is a 20-megawatt system. So, they will not accept any project that does not interconnect to the transmission system. So, keep in mind that the process is a economically competitive one, meaning that you compete largely on price. And so, if you have a 67-megawatt and a 20-megawatt, you get basic economies of scale benefits for being such a larger facility, and that means that this facility will be the 20-megawatt every day of the week. So, those 20-megawatts are, in theory, possible, but in practice, they are not competitive against the larger farms.
So, that's round figures, they, they will accept 100-acre round figures? Because it's basically, is it five acres per?
Closer to seven.
Seven, okay.
I'm trying to wrap my head around how a business would lease 865 acres, but only be able to use 375. I'm just.
Yeah, so, great question. We will not be leasing that entire 865 acres. We will lease, you know, the area inside the fence line plus the setbacks and buffers effectively. So, you know, the rest of that, you know, call it 465 acres will not be within the project. It will not be controlled by Piney Grove Solar, it will be returned to the landowners.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Sure.
But that 465 acres is basically not farmland, is woodland or wetland or?
Correct.
Correct?
Probably.
From him, not you. Do I now?
Probably, yes.
Probably, or no, or yes or no?
I, I mean, you know, without knowing exactly the acres that we're talking about, yes. The, the large amount of that acreage is the wetland that you see there in the turquoise and kind of the northeast corner. That is the majority of the acreage that makes up the delta between those two numbers.
Okay. Excuse me, I don't mean to, I'm just going to hear from you. For a reason.
This is a vicinity map, um, showing that the project is about six miles from Seymour Johnson and about eight and a half miles from Goldsboro. To date, we've completed a number of environmental studies and engineering studies, both looking at the capacity on the transmission system as well as, uh, looking at the land itself. That includes wetland delineations and things of that nature. We've hosted two public information meetings as a part of this land use permitting process, uh, where we invited all landowners that directly to join the project and a few, uh, beyond that as well. Um, the project was submitted to Duke Energy and its solar RFP in September of this year. Um, and moving forward, those projects will be, excuse me, finalists will be announced next month, and, uh, winners will be announced in May. And if selected, this project will track for a 2027 construction start date. So, I can talk through the timelines in more detail if you guys would like, but, um, in broad strips, that's what they are. Final engineering and design, um, further site diligence takes place.
Oh, oh, just wait. Sir, just put it on vibrate if you don't mind. We just, okay, thank you. Nice, simple. So, to, to that point, um, so you're saying that when you acquire the property, when, when would you say it's the 2027, 2027's, um, start date?
Yes, roughly.
So, when are you talking about acquiring the property?
So, the lease will begin, and we are not purchasing any property. We will be leasing it from the current landowners.
When do you plan on leasing it then?
The lease begins, the, basically, the day that construction begins.
So, you, so you don't have any, you don't have any, um, so defined construction?
Basically, you show up with equipment, uh, you start putting down materials, you start pushing dirt around, you start clearing trees. Um, that is defined under the lease as the construction start date.
Is that when y'all start getting the tax credits from the federal government, when you put stuff on-site? Or is it when the completion date?
Um.
I'm talking, when I say y'all, the company, whoever's running the show?
Sure. Um, you know, the, the tax credits that are available are on the solar panels themselves. So, to be honest, I, I'm not really sure.
Who can answer that question here?
Uh, I'd probably be the best one to answer it. I would say that, that they are probably, when they are deployed into the field is when the tax credits are realized. I would say most likely when the farm becomes operational and begins pushing power up until that point.
Bet you don't know for sure, so you can get back with us on that?
That, that is correct.
What's that?
It's, it's upon, it's upon installation.
So, it's not upon, so you don't, so you, what you're saying is you, is you don't get tax credits from the federal government when the, uh, when you start delivering, uh, material on the site? Where you start pushing, you.
Well, that's, that's, that's actually.
Because you'd be under construction financing at that point, and so, you know, the tax credits wouldn't kick in until the farm is operational.
So, when it's operational is when you're producing power, correct?
Correct.
It's a state tax credit.
Or whatever.
They're federal, yeah, they're federal.
Okay, so, go ahead.
The site's designed, and there were some questions on setbacks. Um, as Mr. Chairl mentioned, the project adheres to or exceeds all county setback requirements. There are 50-foot setbacks from the fence, um, to adjoining property lines and roadways, um, with a minimum of 75 feet to proved areas, which is, uh, from my conversation with Barry, my understanding that is the interior surface road that goes around all array areas. So, that is inside the fence line, again, minimum of 75 feet from, uh, from property lines versus the 60-foot required. Um, and there is 250-foot setbacks from, uh, adjoining residential structures versus the 50-foot, uh, property line requirement. Um, and not in the, uh, residential areas, which I believe the only residential area is this northwest corner where there's the subdivision. Um, there are 100-foot setbacks from principal buildings and non-resi, and non-residential areas. Looking to the buffers, there are vegetative buffers within those setbacks out of 25 feet, um, and those will, uh, be planted or preserved, uh, should there be vegetation there that can be preserved, um, wherever we adjoin residential uses and public roads. And as I mentioned, it'll be planted where necessary and preserved where possible. Um, and we did include a couple extra locations based on, um, neighborhood feedback at those public information meetings. A couple of folks asked us to put it in certain locations, and, uh, you know, we did exactly that.
Where's the map in regards to the, the buffer, the, the 250-foot buffer from the subdivision?
Uh, right here.
All right. But that shows a 250 buffer, a setback, I'm sorry, but no buffer?
So, the yellow that you see is the planted buffer.
Oh, okay.
So, the yellow, everywhere that you see yellow, that's where there'll be planted vegetation.
I just wanted to make sure there was a vegetative buffer there.
Yeah, yeah, I, I heard your question, I, I thought about yelling out.
Is it 250 or 220?
Uh, 250.
What's the 220 mean?
Uh, that is, uh, just a measurement, are you talking about in the bottom there?
Yeah, well, it's got a white and black letter.
Yeah, that is a, a measurement from some residences that are right there, simply denoting that, you know, we are even in excess of, in terms of setback from that residence from, you know, what we're proposing overall. So, it's just a call-out for the, the distance from that residential structure.
So, how far is it from the, from, are you saying, you said it's 200 and, I want to give you 470 feet from that residence now, or is that two, what's the 220? You say it's from the residence to the solar?
To the fence line. 220 feet from this, from this residence to the fence line. That is different than the 250 feet that, uh, is for the residential area.
So, is that, oh, so that's the difference. So, it's 250 residential area, but just that one, that one house is 220? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, exactly.
So, it's not 250 feet from, like, the residential area, it's just 220?
In non-residential areas, yes, it's.
Just 220, okay.
Um, a few other design specifications to mention. We will avoid, uh, wetlands, will not disrupt the agricultural ditches or build in the 100-year floodplain. Um, any existing access easements will be preserved. The whole site is enclosed with, uh, security fencing that complies with the National Electric Code. We are exploring a seven-to-eight-foot-high wildlife-friendly fix-not fence. So, there, that enables small mammals to get in and out of the facility. There was some talk of, um, or Barry mentioned that, that we have the option to use opaque fencing versus doing the vegetative buffer, but our intention is not to use the, um, the opaque fencing. I personally think it, it's a worse product, and so, that's, we're going for the vegetative buffer and want to also add in this, uh, wildlife-friendly fencing, which you can't do in tandem with opaque screening. Um, so, again, it's kind of like a fix-not fence, looks about like that. Um, and you can get opossums, foxes, rabbits, things like that can go in and out.
So, it's not going to have a, say it again now? So, it's not going to have a chain-link fence around it?
Correct.
It's going to have like a hog fence around it, or like a DOT fence like you see on the highway?
Uh, or like a, call it, kind of like a.
Like, we call them goat fences. But they have holes that a human, even a baby, can't get through, which you might see.
Again, they're like, yeah.
I, I grew up, I know what you're saying, but I'm asking, I'm saying it's not going to be a, so how, security-wise, so is it, it's not going?
So, there's not chain-link on the top of that fence, no. So, the, basically, the height of that is what allows it to comply with the National Electric Code. Um, you know, if you guys would prefer that we do chain-link?
No, I'm just asking, just asking questions. That's just different than what we've seen in the past, I think.
We're just trying to, you know, make the project better when, you know, new technology and new options become available.
I would think that would be cheaper on y'all.
I'm not sure about that. Probably so, you know, given the cost of metal these days.
Yeah.
Um, underneath the panels is, uh, native grasses, so, um, the, I think it's something like 95% of the site is permeable ground. Um, and again, that's just seeded with basically like a clover mix. Um, and we're exploring pollinator habitats by site entrances to improve the ecological footprint of the area and to hopefully give it a little bit of, uh, curb appeal. Ultimately, that also will be at Duke Energy's discretion. Solar in general is very low-impact use. Um, as shown in the property value analysis, there's no impact on property values given the setbacks and buffers, uh, and that's largely because solar farms don't create any of what are called nuisances that are known to affect property values such as noise, light, odor, vibration, or traffic. Um, the health and safety assessment details no impact on public health and safety as well, and both Mr. Kirkland and Mr. Cleveland are here this, uh, this morning to speak to that. Um, these, uh, landscape renderings, uh, speak to the concealment of the panels by the vegetative buffers over time. The ordinance dictates that the, uh, vegetation be planted at four feet, um, that, that's the height of the vegetation at the time of planting, and it reached 10 feet within three years. So, as you can see from the one-year, three-year, and then five-year, the vegetation grows quickly and will quickly conceal the panels in their entirety. Um, so, I talked about the ground cover being native grasses, it's mowed as needed, but, uh, based on basically drought and weather conditions. Um, but in the Carolinas, we see between five to seven mows per year.
Okay, so, so does the, um, do the panels, how much heat do the panels produce, uh, reflection-wise, um, around the property?
Like, is there a heat island effect? I understand, Tommy, you can speak to that better, but I understand there to be no heat, heat island effect. Um, and the Carolinas especially with, uh, you know, not in desert conditions, the panels do not create a heat island.
So, there's no adverse effect to the land around it, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, let him come up here and talk about it.
You may address that now?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm Tommy Cleveland at 4141 Laurel Hills Road in, in Raleigh. There's not a heat island effect. There's sunlight hitting these panels, and about 20% of that solar energy that hits the panels is taken away, you know, as electricity that the panels are producing. So, that, you know, naturally provides some amount of energy loss, kind of a cooling effect. But the panels do get warm. There's a number of studies that have looked at this, and they don't increase the temperature of the area. So, there's, even a project large like this, there's no impact to the temperature of the area.
So, you don't see it drying the land out around it?
And it doesn't dry land out. In fact, it, some studies that have looked at moisture content in the soil, it increases moisture content in some cases because of the shading effect, it's.
I'm talking about on the outside part of. The reason I'm asking is, that's, I, I would think that would have something to do with drying some of these plants out around the actual property as well as the crops. I've noticed, um, on some of our larger, uh, farms that, uh, especially in beans, you would see, you know, they would be growing, I mean, they would be X-high, and also, when you get around a solar facility, they would start, they would kind of be lower, be, or be, you know, just, I don't know if that's just the thing, but you get out past it X-far, and then it could be, it could be the ground, but I mean, it's kind of.
Outside of the site, there wouldn't be any impact to temperature or moisture.
None at all?
None at all.
And you got, you got stuff to substantiate that, I mean, in.
I do, I referenced some in my health and safety report. Uh, I've got a section there on heat, heat island effect, uh, and it references some studies and describes the studies and makes this conclusion.
In eastern North Carolina?
Uh, no, sir, mostly about, uh, more arid regions. That's where the, there has been more of a concern. Places where there's more moisture, like whole east coast, uh, this is not a concern.
What have you got in North Carolina?
No, no direct studies in North Carolina, but there are expert, particular experts on this topic of heat impacts, and they've, that expert has said, you know, where you have moisture, significant moisture, like anywhere in the east coast, like North Carolina.
But there's not been done.
There would not be.
No, it's been done in North Carolina, but it's done everywhere else.
It's not a need to, the science is the same. It's not a need to, the science is the same, but great, there's not a direct study in North Carolina.
And are the soils the same here as in other states?
I'm not a soils expert, but broadly...
Well, we got one, but I can tell you, I can, I mean, I don't, I'm not an expert, but I can tell you, no, it's not the same.
Well, I can tell you, in the last few years, I've been out at 100 sites, in my day job as a solar engineer, inspecting the sites as they're finishing construction in North Carolina and South Carolina, and they're not warmer or drier than anywhere else. You know, I've been all over the, all over those states, and there's just not an impact on moisture or temperature.
And what's, what page is that on?
Oh, it's probably two-thirds of the way through.
Two-thirds, I'll find it.
Yeah, wow.
I'll find it, I'll find it, two-thirds of the way through, I got it, go ahead. Anybody else got anything, I'm doing a whole lot of talking with questions.
Well, I, yeah, I've got one question. You say construction is going to start in 2027, what's going, what's going to be done with the land until then?
Continue in its current form. It can be farmed, it can be have a timber cut, basically nothing will change until construction starts. So the time in between now and then is largely spent doing, you know, desktop engineering work and waiting on Duke Energy to basically move this project to the front of their construction queue. When you complete the process with them, with their competitive procurement, they will give you a timeline as to when you will come online, and they are roughly projecting that these projects, excuse me, in 2023, will get to the front of the line in 2027. There are other studies that they need to do, and then also there's, you know, roughly an 18-to-24-month lag in between when the studies are complete and when construction starts, where final design is done, you know, building electrical permits are pulled, stormwater permits are pulled, that sort of thing. But up until that time, land can continue to be farmed, it can continue to be leased for farming, can continue to be hunted, there's really no change on a day-to-day basis beyond maybe a pickup truck for a week or two every year. And if the solar farm doesn't go through, then it's as if we were never here, you know, there will be no impact to the land, and the solar farm is still in its very early stages. So we, based on the incentives that are required by the Duke Energy process, that's why people are coming earlier and earlier on in the process, and you guys may have noticed that, whereas, you know, previously we'd come three years into the development process, we're now coming more like one year, because Duke has changed the process where it's now basically a money where your mouth is way to proceed. So every time you go from one step to the next, you basically have to post seven figures of security, and they do that so that they know that you're good for the project, and as a result of that, you know, we have to have our permits in hand, especially one that's binary, you know, yes or no, like the land use permit, you gotta have that before you can put seven figures up.
Made your life difficult, hadn't they?
Yeah. Yes, indeed.
All right, continue on.
All right. Beyond the vegetative maintenance on the operations, solar farm is very passive, very easy to maintain. There's no permanent folks on site, there's no, you know, guard tower or anything like that. There's, they are monitored 24/7, and there are monthly, quarterly, and annual inspections that look at different components of the facility to make sure that all the connections are still safe and effective, and, you know, that all the equipment is functioning properly. And then, of course, in the event of storm, storms, or if there's an issue that's identified as a result of the remote monitoring, you know, you have as-needed maintenance. And then, looking beyond the operations at the end of the term, the, this project, we expect will be subject to the statewide decommissioning ordinance that DEQ will enforce, that was passed as a part of House Bill 130. If not, a security will be provided in favor of the landlord as required by the lease agreements. We have submitted a decommissioning plan and cost estimate included in your packet with a few of the plan details below, and this just shows the value of the time, excuse me, the value of the system over time relative to the removal costs. So in year one, as you would imagine, you know, the value of the system is enormous, and the value to remove it is, you know, relatively small, and even two decades later, the value of the system is still considerably more than the cost to remove it. And this decommissioning plan is updated every five years to keep those cost estimates current. But basically, the reason that the numbers are what they are is there's just, solar farms are very simple in terms of their actual construction, they're made of commodity metals like copper and aluminum and steel, so all of that can be readily recycled, you know, at the end of the day, and that's what drives a lot of the continued value beyond the inverters and transformers, which we can be recycled and resold and things like that. And that doesn't even mention the panels, which can also be recycled and resold.
Let me ask you a question, then I kind of know about what your answers will be, but if for some reason the solar facility, or solar company would go bankrupt, what, how does that affect the landowner? Who do they deal with then? How do they do, how do they go about, who do they negotiate with? Do they negotiate straight with Duke?
I guess that's a harder question to answer than, you know, it might be, just because it depends on...
So nobody's going bankrupt in the solar facility business?
Not to my knowledge. Well, there has been, but no project specific, no specific project goes bankrupt. The way that, the reason that it's under Pine Grove Solar and not Renewable Energy Services developing the solar farm is because each solar farm is siloed into its own entity, where the only thing that that entity does is operate Pine Grove Solar, and that is to ensure that the solar farm that goes, that may go out of business, let's say down the street, does not impact, you know, there's no cross-collateralization of all the different solar farms.
Okay.
So each one has a contract with Duke Energy that guarantees 100% of the power produced is purchased.
Through, through the operator?
Yes, through Pine Grove Solar, would own the contract with Duke, that is for the wholesale power agreement. And so if that is still in place, then basically the landowner would be dealing with the bank, and there are stipulations in the lease that say, you know, if the operator goes out of business, but everything else is still okay, you will enter into a new agreement with the bank, so the bank can continue to operate it.
The bank?
And force that with the, and fulfill that obligation or that contract with Duke Energy. And it's also possible that Duke Energy will own this project outright. As of last year, or I guess maybe two years ago, Duke will own 55% of all new solar farms in the Carolinas, that is written into state, state law.
Means they got control then, they own 55%?
Yes, as Mr. Carroll mentioned, their lobbyists are quite effective.
So, so you're saying the bank would run it?
I'm saying that the solar farm, from your purposes, would not go bankrupt.
I just asked your questions, because one of these questions have not been asked, have not been asked on, have not been asked from, in previous ones, and...
Sure.
We just kind of hear things going out, and I've heard of solar operations companies, I guess, going out and just trying to figure out who the landowner or who they would actually deal with after the fact, because, I mean, I don't, I mean, utility companies can be a little difficult to deal with, especially if you don't do it on a daily basis. So just, okay.
This, this is a good point, because you're correct, Mr. Chairman, this question has not been asked, even though the, you got separate entities, if, if that entity in itself goes out of business, goes bankrupt, who's left with the responsibility of decommissioning and removing the solar panels?
So it's, it's not the landowner, it's, it's the project owner that, you know, carries that responsibility. And so a solar farm going out of business is sort of like an apartment building going out of business, that just because the operator of that apartment building goes out of business, it doesn't mean you kick the tenants out, and that that asset is not continuing to receive cash flow. The same thing would govern the solar farm, where just because, you know, the operator goes out of business, that does not mean that this asset goes out of business.
Who are the owners of that entity?
At present, it is Renewable Energy Services. However, we've bid the project to Duke Energy, and they have the option to buy it, you know. We want, they will buy 55% of the market, so, you know, we want just to get solar into the ground, and we've given them the option to buy it, and that's how, as I mentioned, like, the thing about battery, it being at Duke's discretion, it's at their option.
Bottom line is this, if your company, for some rea, whatever reason, goes out of business, then the entity, this entity is such, would not have, you would not have the responsibility, because you couldn't fulfill it, because you got out of business.
Exactly.
I think it would be more accurate to say that this entity would not go out of business if RES went out of business. If, let's say, RES, you know, the, we lose 100 projects in a row and, you know, go out of business, that does not mean that this asset is not profitable. And therefore, just as the apartment building could be resold to a new owner, as could this solar farm.
To that point, so that means that the renegotiation would come between the landowner and who?
No, there would, there is no guarantee that there'd be a...
So what, what do we just, I don't know if you're like...
I mean, can I say something real quick?
Yes, sir.
From what my understanding, Duke buys 100% of this energy.
They buy either all the power wholesale, or they buy the project outright.
Okay, so either way, that's, that's what it go down, so regardless if you're going out of business or whatever, you're still producing energy for Duke, which is buying it. So regardless, some, it's going to be profitable for somebody to come in and buy that, because Duke is buying it.
Who's this, what I'm took, I'm, I'm asking questions for the landowner, just entering an agreement.
I understand what you're saying, but, but at the end of the day, it's still profitable for Duke.
It's profitable for Duke.
You know what I mean, so somebody's gonna have to come in, somebody's gonna come in and, 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 and say, well, this...
Duke wouldn't own 55% of it if they want...
Even if they come in, Duke themselves came in and said, we're gonna buy the whole project, because you're going out of business at a, at a discounted rate.
Exactly.
Because they're going out of business, because they've already invested in it anyway. So I, I see a, it's no way to lose, because Duke Energy is never going out of business.
Well, I agree with that, but what I'm looking at is for the landowner. What I want to hear from them is if, if, if something goes south, your company does, goes out of business, somebody else comes in and buys that, other than Duke, that other 45%, they come in and buy it, then the agreement for, how long's the agreement for, for this project?
Maximum of 40 years.
40 years, so you got an agreement, is it a 20-year with a 20-year option?
It's 20 and 555.
Say it again now?
20 plus four, five-year extensions.
So 20, so basically you got, you got a, you got a solid grant for 20 years?
Yes.
Alright, so 20 years, and, and you're all paying X amount per acre?
Right.
Is that public knowledge or not?
No.
Okay, so you're paying X amount per acre, and I'm just gonna use a, just a figure. You're paying $800 an acre. So if you go out of business, I hope you don't, I don't wish that on anybody, but if you go, I'm hypothetically, if you go out of business and somebody else comes in and gets that 45%, or for that matter, if Duke acquires the other 45%, because they're already own 55, so they're in control, well, how's that gonna affect the landowner that y'all done a deal with at 20 years? So you, so who's gonna pay, so how does that, so y'all put that money up front? I mean, so...
Just to like return to the apartment example, if somebody buys an apartment building, they do not code all the tenants and renegotiate every lease in that building. That, that lease rate is the same?
You're telling me, for the landowners' sake, that, that, whatever they're getting paid for, whatever they signed an agreement with, you know, y'all signed an agreement with them for 20 years, that's what they're gonna get paid, whether y'all in business or not?
Yes, I mean, that, they are...
And that's in writing?
Yes.
That's in their contract?
Yes.
Whether y'all, whether y'all...
There's no mechanism by which we can force them to take less rent.
Y'all.
Correct.
I'm talking about, if, but if y'all not in a picture, that's what I'm asking.
Let me just step in.
I'm just asking, I'm, I'm looking for...
And please keep in mind that landowners have asked these questions, I mean, no one is more focused on these questions and protecting their own...
Well, we got to make a decision on something, we need to hear it too.
Right, now, first I'll start by saying it's not an S U P standard, I know you're interested, it's not one of the evidence issues we have to address. Every single property owner in this county can lease their land to a company, and every single property owner takes the exact same risk as everybody else. This is just the nature of leasing.
But most don't, not sign a 20-year agreement with somebody.
Well, actually, well, there are a lot, uh, salt, uh, cell towers were, are some of the pioneers in this. Now, but what Mr. Adelafil is saying is that his company, RES, potentially could go bankrupt. They're not going to, because they have owned all of these very productive solar farms, but solar farms are the least bankruptable entities you can find. I could challenge you to name another entity, because it doesn't have customers it has to chase, it's not subject to changing costs and items it has to purchase in a marketplace, it has one customer, its goods are the sunlight, and those are free, the fixed costs are put in at the beginning, and all it has to do is know that people are using electricity, and that will continue, and that Duke Energy is not going to go out of business. Now, if Duke Energy goes out of business...
And the sun rises.
I'm sorry?
And the sun rises.
And the sun, and the sun does rise, then we're in trouble. We are in trouble if Duke goes out of business, but there will be ripple effects over this entire county, far beyond solar. So all we are saying is that Pine Grove Solar is independent on all these leases from RES. Pine Grove Solar has a lease that is binding upon all successors and all the signs. So whoever steps into RES's shoes is bound by that exact same lease contract.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna finish that for just a minute. So, I mean, to me, one is up to the owner of the land, whether they want to do business with you or not.
That's...
So that's first and foremost, it's not, it's not really our decision, we're just here to approve whether, you know, the solar farm will go. But my thing is this, it's no different than leasing a car or anything. If, if, if I'm the owner of this land and I lease it to you, if you default on your payment and you go out of bankrupt, is there anything in the contract, I would put in the contract that I get that other 45%? Or it's now that they're on my land, I'm getting, I have some stake in the solar farm now, is, is, would it go any way like that?
They do not get an ownership in the comp, in the solar company, but they, they do continue to get paid not just 100% of the lease, but it's 100% of the lease payment plus the escalation clauses that accrue over time.
Okay, so if you go bankrupt, basically, just say for, for instance, it's that, that landowner wouldn't be able to say, okay, well, that, you're bankrupt, they're on my land?
Yes.
And if nobody's coming, coming in, you know what I mean, to, to decompose them or whatever, but it's still time left on that lease with Duke Energy for the remainder of that contract with Duke Energy?
The bank would step in and own that.
Okay.
Again, back to like an apartment example, if you have a loan with the bank and you go out of business, the bank steps in, owns that building, and receives that, you know, income that that asset is producing.
But you see what I'm saying?
But, yeah, but the landowner is still paying 100%.
Okay, okay.
And, and it's, I'll tell you, it's far, 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 far better and safer than if the landowner were to lease their land to another farmer, to somebody who's just living there as a residential renter. Those are the risky leases. This is the least risky I have ever seen, and I've practiced law almost 40 years.
Say that again, it's, what'd you just say about the risk lease?
I said that solar is the least riskiest lease I have ever seen. It's actually, it's comparable to a cell tower, but I would, I would actually make it less risky of any lease I have ever seen. All other leases are subject to companies or people, and that company's ability to stay in business. Here, it's just a, it's a very different market, a very different owner, it's a very different product, that, that means that of all the people in Wayne County who might on their own decide to lease their land for something, these landowners are taking probably the least risk of anybody.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
My only concern was the decommissioning of the...
If it stops, then it's fine.
Your personal business is not our business. But what I'm concerned about is, at the end, the decommissioning and the removal of these solar farms, if the entity or a company, the responsible party, is in fact filing bankruptcy, who would be? The bank is not gonna be responsible.
That's the reason for the bonds.
That, yes. So there are bonds.
That's the reason for the bond, yes.
I'm sorry, that's, that's critical here, so there are some bonds in place to ensure the decommission.
Yes, and so it's...
That's your answer to the question, Barry. Good.
Let's, let's do that after, till he gets through.
Okay.
Go ahead, go ahead. Alright, go ahead, I'm sorry.
You're good. Keep your questions coming.
No, don't worry.
No.
Uh, as far as community benefits, the solar farm will create substantial benefits for Wayne County. The solar farm will create approximately 1,100 to 1,200% increase in taxes for Wayne County over the status quo, over the existing, and so over time, over a 40-year period, that's 3.3 million versus $275,000 in taxes. Again, solar farm versus the status quo, and that's year one, 154,000 versus almost 6,900. And in addition, the EPA estimates that based on the pollution reduced or offset by the solar farm, that it will produce at least 2.6 million in annual public health benefit. that it will produce at least two point six million in annual public health benefit. Um, in terms of construction, uh, approximately a hundred and fifty people will be required during the twelve to eighteen month period that is required for construction. Um, excuse me. That would create, you know, a significant increase in demand, um, for, and, and the local economy for things like sanitation, fuel, fencing, survey work, um, equipment rentals, food, lodging, things like that. Um, and the project is committed to working with the Wayne County Development Alliance and Wayne County Chamber to utilize local contractors and suppliers wherever possible. And all of this is with no demand on consumption of, uh, local utilities. Um, it doesn't require any taxpayer-funded services, like no additional teachers required, students in schools, no additional, uh, you know, first responders or equipment that they need to fight a solar farm fire or anything like that. Um, so the benefits are substantial.
Alright, let me ask you a question. Does the solar facility or solar company, when they enter into an agreement with the landowner, do they pay the property tax?
They do.
They, who does?
The solar company.
Okay, solar company does that. Okay, so it's, oh. So what is the percentage, um, that you pay property tax on? Do you pay it a hundred percent on the land?
Yes, there is a eighty percent personal property tax abatement on the equipment that's out there.
So that's.
That is statewide.
So it's twenty percent on the equipment. I like the way you said eighty percent.
Eighty percent abatement, yeah, yeah.
So twenty percent, so if the equip, so what, so that solar facility, what's that solar facility gonna, gonna value at?
Uh, you know, just to take a very round number, a million dollars a megawatt is, you know, that's more than that, but, um.
A million dollars a megawatt?
Yeah, so call it.
So that's sixty-seven million dollars?
That's easy enough for, you know, today's math.
Okay. Alright, so out of that sixty-seven, how much part, what part of that's the land?
I don't have those numbers. I have my fingertips.
Does anybody got those numbers?
No, but typically what most counties do is instead of, it, it takes it out of agricultural exemption and now you're being, you're taxing this land as though we're in, in an industrial use. So.
So what's it gonna go to?
Uh, I don't know, but there are several studies, uh, if you, I can't give you the actual number. What I can tell you is that there are several studies in North Carolina, uh, there was first one in twenty nineteen, another one that was done in twenty twenty-two that looked at the value of land under exemption the year before it became a solar farm. And then the value of that land the year after a solar farm, and this is just tax assessment. And it's, the average is about two thousand percent increase in the amount that goes to the county.
Okay, so the equipment out of that sixty-seven million, what, what do you think? I mean, this is in your warehouse, what's the equipment gonna be on it?
It'd be most. Um, yeah, it'd be most of it.
Most of it?
Yeah.
So sixty-five million?
Um.
Say sixty million?
Sure.
Sixty million, so sixty million dollars. Alright, so we're getting, uh.
Uh, yeah, I mean, yeah. I'm not, I'm not confident in that number.
You're not confident? You wanna say fifty million? I'm just thought this.
Where are we going with this?
I'm trying to figure out what we're getting, what we're getting taxable income off of. We're getting taxed, if it's sixty million dollars, we're getting taxable income off of twelve million dollars.
The taxes paid are a hundred and fifty-four thousand, uh, in the first year of the county. Over the forty-year period, three point three million dollars in taxes are paid to the county.
Okay.
You know, how that, how that breaks down, you know, I can't, I don't know the mileage rates and how that.
I understand that, what I'm getting at is we're, I mean, the way it's, the way it's structured right now is the county can only tax real property on twenty percent of what you value the equipment on. Is that correct?
That, yes, that is a statewide program.
I understand that, but that's, that's the way it is, right? So if it's sixty million dollars, just my quick math, that's twelve million dollars worth. So instead of us getting taxed on sixty million dollars, we're getting taxed on twenty million, I mean, twelve million dollars. But that'd be twenty percent of sixty is twelve million, right?
Yes.
Okay, alright, that's, so let me ask you this. For some reason, that figure would go to fifty percent or eighty percent taxable. Just for some reason that, that the County Commissioner Association gets the better lobbyists that Duke Energy's got.
Mm-hmm.
And that happens. How's that gonna affect the, uh, landowner with the, uh, with? None at all. So.
They don't, they don't pay taxes. It affects, it affects the entity.
I'm talking about the amount that y'all got agreement with. So you're saying if it's, if we, if for some reason we get it changed and it's eighty percent that we acquire property tax on the real property, on that piece of property, if they're getting eight hundred dollars a month this year, in year ten, they're still, I mean, eight hundred a year, they're still gonna get eight hundred dollars a year per acre in years, in year ten, and we get it changed. And that's incorrect?
Yes, I mean, you know, we're speculating about, you know, future legislation.
Stuff, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there where people, I mean, I'm asking questions that we never asked before. And that's where I want people to understand exactly where this thing, this is not just.
So, um, excuse me, currently, right now, we're getting how much in taxes?
He said a hundred and fifty-four.
No, currently you're getting six hundred, sixty-eight hundred dollars.
Sixty-eight hundred dollars.
Sixty-nine hundred dollars.
And year one of your project will be a hundred and fifty-four.
Four thousand.
Okay.
But that's gonna be, they got to back out of the last four years in the, uh, in the land use plan.
They what now?
They got the last four years of the land use plan that was in the, uh, for farming, you get a reduction in property. Is that, I mean.
That's correct. There is also an eighty percent tax abatement for farmland.
Eighty percent or fifty percent?
It's eighty.
Huh?
It's eighty.
Can we call Allen and Asta and I'll think that's correct? Huh?
It's not eighty.
It's not eighty, yeah. So you're telling me that that's eighty?
Sorry?
Are you telling me it's eighty?
Yes, that's my understanding of the state program. Is there a farmer in here or no such? What is the tax statement on?
Well, it's not, they're not, they're not, I'm, I'm asking you, I mean.
I, I told you what I think it is.
Okay, eighty percent, he says eighty percent. Alright.
Even at eighty percent or whatever it is, we're still gonna end up getting more than sixty-eight hundred dollars a month in taxes, correct?
Are you?
Yeah, correct. Regardless, no matter what. I just want, I mean, because we're, we're sitting here arguing over stuff and asking all these questions that kind of sort of seem irrelevant at this point, you know what I mean? And it's like we're holding things up and not moving along for, for questions that really are relevant because regardless of whether, whatever the amount is, it's more than what we're getting now.
I understand that. And the questions I'm asking, I don't feel like they're irrelevant. I'm just asking questions to see exactly where, to make sure we're all on the same page. I'm just asking to, I know how things are gonna proceed down the road, if for some reason they would go out of business. Go ahead, but you go ahead and finish your.
Thank you.
Your thing.
Um, I'll just go through the comp plan, uh, briefly. This was submitted as a part of our application. Um, you know, expanding new businesses, diversifying the tax base, the project will do that. Um, the project land is leased from commu, community members. Um, appropriate opportunity sets for new businesses. Uh, solar's a good neighbor. I think we've touched on that. It's a low-impact use. Consideration for Seymour Johnson, uh, the project is completed correspondence with the base to ensure there'll be no negative impact on Air Force operations. Glare study has been touched on and you guys have a copy of that, uh, and the base has determined that the project is compatible with their operations. They have provided those recommendations and we are adopting them as conditions of approval to this project.
All filed?
Yes, but no, three, there's three recommendations. They examined it on five categories.
Three, I'm sorry.
Um, uh, and, uh, town and develop, or excuse me, town and country development pattern, pattern, rural development standards. Again, this kind of speaks to the low-impact nature of solar, will not create noise, traffic, light, odor, emissions, anything like that. It does not require consumption of water or sewer, does not require the installation of curb and gutter, um, no permanent lighting on site or anything like that. And this, uh, map, you know, speaks more than, or does more to, to speak for it than, you know, the previous text slides do. You can see that the project is outside of the urban and adjacent areas that would be better suited for other forms of development. And the project is also outside of all conservation areas. It will avoid development, uh, in any one hundred-year floodplain. It will be permitted within C D E Q, ensuring that any stormwater features will be installed, agricultural ditch is preserved, and no development will occur in environmentally sensitive areas. So with that, you know, I'm happy to conclude the presentation. I'm happy to answer more questions if there are them, or I can hand it off to, uh, Mr. Kirkland and Mr. Cleveland to speak to their portion of the presentation.
I'm good.
I've got a question for Barry. Barry, where does this play in? The county has already got a decommission plan. Does our plan play into it anywhere?
Yeah, they have submitted that, uh, a copy for us, uh, for the decommissioning plan, so we do have one. Yeah, we do, um.
We did have one they have submitted for the county, um, but they do also have to do the, uh, requirements, meet the requirements now for the state, for the state decommissioning plan as well. But, uh, but they do have that information for us for decommissioning as well.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else? Or next?
Just looking at some of the questions, there will not be panels in the right of way. Uh, touch on the footprints. Yeah, I'll hand it off. Thank you, guys.
Four. I, I'm mindful of the time. Uh, this county has heard twenty-one solar farms. You've approved twenty-one solar farms over time. You have, uh, Mr. Cleveland and Mr. Kirkland have both been found to be experts on many occasions here in Wayne County. They have essentially the same, uh, reports as before. I do think it's important to have them up in front of you just to see if you have questions, but I would like them to each get up and introduce their report and so that they will be here. Tommy, if you would start.
Good evening, board. You heard from me a minute ago, Tommy Klugland at forty-one forty-one Laurel Hills Road in, in Raleigh. Uh, yeah, I've been here before this, for previously. I'm a licensed engineer in, in North Carolina and a number of other states. And I've dedicated my career to, to solar energy for close to twenty years now. Uh, spent about twelve years at North Carolina State University at a center that focused on solar energy, really before there was a uh, industrial-scale solar, um, industry in, in North Carolina or really anywhere outside of California. So I got a very early start and I've seen the industry developed. When solar first started getting developed in North Carolina and I was at the university, concerns from communities all across the state came to our group and, and to me as one of the engineers there. So I've developed a deep expertise in, you know, local impacts, particularly health and safety impacts, and I've continued to stay abreast with research and experience in those topics since then. And that's the basis for the report I put together for this project. It was a site-specific health and safety assessment where I looked at what's proposed here, the latest information on all the health and safety concerns that have, that have been raised over time and went through each of those and laid out what I see as any potential for impacts from the site. My conclusion is there's a clear positive impact on public health in that this is producing electricity that's gonna reduce pollution from other sources of electricity. Uh, Mr. Delaford referenced that EPA number earlier, but EPA puts a really high estimation on public health benefit of that reduced air pollution, uh, I think on the order of two and a half million dollars a year in public health benefits from a project this size in North Carolina. And the, my conclusion in looking at the possible negative impacts is there is no negative health or safety impacts to the public. I'm glad to take any questions more specific, on specific topics if you have something.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nick Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals. I'm a state-certified general appraiser in, uh, multiple states, including North Carolina. I've been accepted as an expert in property value impacts before boards like this hundreds of times, including before this board about half a dozen more times. Um, and I, you all are familiar with match pair analyses and paired sales analysis. I just wanna touch on something. Uh, the last time I was here, I was asked about, well, yeah, but we have a lot of solar farms in our county. What, what new information do you have? So we do have new information and I would just like to highlight that for you. Um, it ranges from about page thirty-four through page forty-two of the impact study we provided. Um, that is the AM Best Solar Farm as well as the Cookstown Solar Farm. Both of those have, uh, uh, they're right near Goldsboro. And what we found is consistent data similar to what we found previously, that homes next to solar farms are selling for similar prices as other homes not next to solar farms. Um, the Cookstown Solar Farm, we actually were able to do a, a slightly different type of match pair analyses. So the first type is there's a home, it's next to a solar farm, we compare it to homes in the same subdivision or area to determine, well, is the one next to the solar farm selling for more or less or about the same? The second type is, okay, well, you've got a house. Well, then you build a solar farm next to the house, then the house sells. Well, did it sell for as much as other houses in the area? Was it appreciating as quickly as other houses? Uh, things of that sort. Um, and so there's two different indications and the, the second type really eliminates the, uh, need for adjustments and that sort of thing, especially when talking to the broker or someone party to the transaction who can speak to the condition and quality and that, yeah, it is really similar to the quality of it two years ago, they just needed to move. And being able to ask, hey, that's next to the solar farm. Were the, the buyers or sellers concerned about that? And no, they weren't. And we have comments on page forty and forty-one, um, from the, the broker involved with the Cookstown, uh, solar farm for the home that sold next to it, where they indicated, yeah, you could see the solar farm. It wasn't perfectly screened like they're proposing here, but the buyers weren't concerned about it and the sellers didn't list it for any less and it sold in a similar amount of time. Uh, so based on this information, it's my professional opinion that the proposed solar farm will not have any impact on the adjoining property values. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Where was that data taken?
Um, that data ranges from, the initial data we had ranges from twenty thirteen up to twenty sixteen or so.
Wayne County.
Uh, the Wayne County data, re-updating that ranges from twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-two.
So when the home value escalated anyway?
Yes, I mean, we have examples from twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two.
I'm talking all, all property, all houses sold for a whole lot more than what they did back in.
What we're comparing it to is we're not just comparing it to, in general, did it sell for more than before? There's something called the F H F A Housing Price Index. It's essentially, um, put out by the federal government and what it lets them do is they track housing prices on a quarterly basis in multiple sub-markets across the entire country. And so what this lets you do is you can say, well, if I had a house that sold for five dollars in the first quarter of twenty twenty, and then it sold again in the third quarter of twenty twenty-two, how much should it have appreciated? In other words, how much more should it be worth based on the local data? And well, what we're finding is that they are selling for more than what this housing price index indicates it should have. In other words, homes next to solar farms are appreciating more than the typical home in the market area based on this federal calculator on market areas. Uh, and so it is not just based on all homes are up. It, it's in fact, yes, all homes are up, but this is up even more than other homes in the area.
So you're saying if you got a house beside a solar facility, they're just gonna be worth more than.
Oh, my God. My, my conclusion is that it would have no impact. There is data that shows that it could possibly have a positive impact, but the majority of the data is no significant impact and that is a more defendable position.
That'll work. Anybody got any questions?
Yes, sir.
What's that? Silly, oh. Anybody got anything to ask?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Carol, how many do we got?
Um, sir, we have four.
We have Ryan, is it Nally?
Yeah.
Okay, Ryan Nally, David Vincent, Gabe Mitchell, and Joanne Summerlin. So first, Mr. Nally.
And they've been sworn, right?
Yes, sir, they have.
Alright, keep, keep in mind that we need to, you know, I know it's gonna be emotions involved, but try to keep them to a minimum.
Oh, sure. Nothing to worry about. Uh, is it appropriate for me to ask a question? Is that okay? I really didn't have a comment or anything.
I don't see, I mean, Mr. Board, is that? Yes, sir.
Cool. Uh, so my question primarily, I live in the Dobbs County State Subdivision, um, on the south end of the cul-de-sac directly bordering the planned area for the solar facility. Um, my question primarily is, it sounds like, if I'm understanding it, is that there will be, uh, vegetative, I'm assuming that's trees that are gonna border that. Is that the?
That's what they're telling me.
Defend, okay, cool. And then a secondary question on the slide about the distance from the residential area. It's at fifty feet measured from the property line, but two hundred and fifty feet measured from the principal building. So does that imply that it's gonna be two hundred and fifty feet from my home, not two hundred and fifty feet from the property line?
Correct. Setbacked controls is the two hundred and fifty feet from your home to the fence line.
Got it. So it's not necessarily, it could still be just fifty feet from the property line, depending on the cumulative distance from the home.
That's a good question. That's, that's actually, because we've asked that question in the past. So what he's saying is it's not two hundred and fifty feet from the actual line, it's two hundred and fifty feet from the actual current residence. Is that correct?
That is correct. I, I do believe that it's still an excess of the, uh, what the minimum ordinance requires.
I read the question would be, where is your, the back of your house from the back of your property line?
And I would, I don't know the exact measurements, but I would assume that the, it's gonna be a negligible difference from the fifty feet.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would imagine about a hundred feet or so.
Yeah, that would be my guess.
Barry, we'll have to say the back on, for the property line, the back of the structure.
Typically, a rear setback would require us twenty-five feet, but in a subdivision like this, it could be possibly a hundred, it just depends on how deep the lot is.
Yeah.
Twenty-five to a hundred feet.
He's in the cul-de-sac, so his probably got a deeper lot than.
It's pretty deep.
They have a deeper lot, so, yeah. It, I'm guessing based on that cul-de-sac, it might be a hundred feet off of this back property line.
Yep. Okay. That was everything I had. Okay. That was everything I had to ask. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. David Vincent.
Good morning.
Good morning, Vincent.
All right. I don't have a catalog for you with all the facts and figures. I've got 50 years of farming experience, tended that very land, this part of this, probably 200 acres of it. And some of it is the most prime farmland in the county and some is the poorest on this farm. But the poorest is not in solar. Prime land is what's in solar. But anyway, my concern is, I've lived through three floods in the last, since 99. A lot of this land where they're putting these solar panels has been underwater. I rode a boat over these fields. They can do all the flood plain pictures and all I got in the flood plain from the county. In the yellow part where it's 2.2% flooded, I rode a boat across that. These turkeys floated out of these turkey houses across Sutton Road. I mean...
And that was in what year?
That was 16, back in 99, the same thing. It's been three years of flooding.
Right.
I mean, there was water across Pine Grove Road right up to St. John's Church Road, to the intersection there. I mean, I know I've lived there all my life.
So let me ask you a question. So are you, and I'm probably, they might take it up his time by doing this, asking a question. Go ahead.
All right. And anyway, you know, Mr. Akott mentioned taking farmland out. Well, this is taking some of the best. We can't eat solar panels. You know, you can take out all the farmland. Wayne County thrives on agriculture, always has. I know there's bigger tax base for it, but, you know, we got to eat. And I've only raised my family off of this land. I've got seven or eight employees that raise their families. When this solar farm goes in, where's all this job? I mean, who's going to have a job? You know, it's taken up not only the farmers, but all the people that work for farmers. But anyway, that's, you know, the flooding is going to get worse with the concrete and the asphalt and the building highways in Raleigh, Greensboro, Durham, right on the, it all flushes to us. And it's going to be worse year after year. You know, I don't think electricity and water should be put together. I just, but they can't put solar in a, what they consider wetlands, that they can put it where it floods. That don't make a lot of sense to me. Yeah, so anyway, but, and I've got pictures at water right there by my house where I rode the boat in. That's a tri-county electric truck going to it, if y'all would like to see them. This one here is a little blurry, but these thousand pounds bales of straw, a half a mile from my house, they floated up to the edge of my property line. My property line joins this property. It'd be like a horseshoe around me. I live on the corner of Pine Grove Road and Sutton Road, and it's going horseshoe me. But, you know, I'm just opposed to it. I'm not opposed to solar, but put it somewhere where it's non-productive land or non, you know, don't take the best, you know, farmland. People got to eat. And, you know, these guys are good sellers. They're like the people that sold lightning rods to people back in the 60s. I mean, they're pretty good. But the government quit subsidizing, you couldn't find these cats. They'd be gone. You would never see them again, you know. No offense to y'all, you know, I'm just telling them like it is. Oh, also, all the water wells for East Wayne Water District, at least 25% of the water for Wayne County comes from this section right here where all this flooding was and where they're going to put these solar panels. I think that needs to be in consideration. They can tell you all the studies and tell you what it won't hurt, what it will hurt. People in Jacksonville, Capitolview, thought the water was good several years ago, but look what's happened. You know, so studies, they ain't been out there long enough to do it. Now, what Chris talked about before, about it hurting the crops next to it, there's a solar farm behind Ormond Gas off of Sydney Highway. I tend the farm right across the dirt path from it, continued it for 30 years. That farm goes halfway from 70 to the new bypass 70. Well, my farm goes all the way, and that one does too, but the solar farm stops halfway. My crop on that side of the path next to the solar farm, my wheat one is good, my soybeans one is good. Just as soon as I get past the solar farm, my bushels increase per acre.
And how do you tell that?
Well, combines have a thing where it gives you the bushels per acre while you're harvesting. And it would, I mean, it was 40, 30, 40% difference. And they tell me it don't affect it, it's got to affect it.
So let me ask you a question. That picture right there, how far is that from the...
Their first sign is right there, right in front of that truck there. The first sign they put up for public hearings because that was one of the pieces of land.
Okay.
But now the water went right on to St. John's.
And this is, this is going around the curve?
Yeah.
Right, okay. All right.
And it's going to get worse. The flooding is going to get worse.
All right.
I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next, we have Gabe Mitchell.
My name is Gabe Mitchell, 104 Sutton Run, Goldsboro, North Carolina. I'm a citizen of Wayne County, taxpaying citizen, have been all my life. I'm also an agriculture instructor for 22 years. Students from all over North Carolina come to Wayne County to learn and train about agriculture at Wayne Community College where I teach. Now, some of the land in question is personal to me because Pine Grove Church Road and Sutton Road is where I was raised. That's the corner I was raised on. I learned to drive a tractor there. I learned to drive a truck. This is the land where I first learned to take care of the soil, which is the precious resource that is vital to all lives. Now, this land produces some of the best yields, just as David said. Now, I understand every landowner has a right to do whatever they want to on their land, and I'm not trying to tell anybody what they can't do on their land. However, I do want to remind you, there are a few things that I think we all value, and I think we all have to eat to live. Now, in order to eat, we need farmers, and farmers need productive soil, just like the one that's being proposed this morning. Now, as a teenager at Eastern Wayne High School, I memorized the FFA creed and have taught it to my students throughout my career. And it begins with, "I believe in the future of agriculture with a faith born not of words but of deeds. Achievements won by the present and past generations of agricultures and the promise of better days through better ways, even though the better things that we now enjoy have come to us from the struggles of former years." Now, that first paragraph is powerful because the present and past agricultures are now questioning the promise of better days through better ways because the better ways that we're being taught now and what we have been taught can't be put in practice on solar farm land, calling it solar farm, which is a misnomer. Solar farm has nothing to do with farming. Thank you for bringing that up. That was in my statement as well. And I also find it interesting that on the RES website, the first thing you see is drone footage of beautiful farmland. And with the words, and I quote, "sustainable solar farm development." What is sustainable about solar farms? Now, I teach sustainable agriculture, and the word sustainable means we get to use the precious resources that are provided to us in such a way that it will last for generations. We all know that solar panels, they already stated, don't last much more than 20 years. They've got to be replaced. Panels are not made in Wayne County, they're not made in North Carolina or even the United States. They have to be repaired and replaced. So what's sustainable about this? Does RES have Wayne County citizens' best interest in mind? Are they truly sustainable? I don't think so. Our farmers are good people who gamble each and every year to produce a crop to help feed the world, and they struggle. They struggle with volatile commodity prices, weather conditions, seed viability, soil fertility, and labor sources, just a name for you. And in recent years, they struggle in urban encroachment as more and more neighborhoods, roads, businesses are built on productive farmland in the name of progress, and I understand that. But now they struggle with installation of solar panels on fertile land. Now, I understand the money that the landowners are apt to make on this and what our county can also benefit from it as far as money is concerned, but there's been a lot of questions. I heard all these questions, and they weren't able to have answers to every one of them. And I still have a lot of questions about, you know, negative health benefits. You know, were they here in Wayne County during those storms that we had in those three years? No, they were not. Did they ride around on a boat on that land? No, they did not. Do they have to drink water from that area? No, they do not, but I do. You know, I have a lot of questions about it. Now, what can I tell my students at Wayne Community College? Can I tell my students at Wayne Community College that our commissioners have their back? Because they're come to me hungry for the future of agriculture. They want a job in agriculture, the number one industry in Wayne County. Can I tell them that that's secure? And the last paragraph of the FFA creed states that, "I believe in American agriculture can and will hold true to the best traditions of our national life and that I can exert an influence in my home and community which will stand solid for my part in that inspiring task." Well, that's why I'm here today. I know my time's out, but I got just a few more seconds. I'm here today because I believe that we can and we should hold true to the best traditions of agricultural life and protect our farmland to keep it producing profitable crops. I hope that hearing this today makes everyone think about the damage that this can do to production agriculture. If we continue to lose good productive farmland, so-called, to so-called green energy, where will we be when we no longer have enough land to produce the crops to feed us? I hate to even think about it, but I hope y'all think about it. And I hope that we can hold true to the best traditions of our national life. Thank y'all so much for your time.
Thanks, sir.
And finally, Ms. Joanne Summerlin, please.
Can I say something real quick? I just want to pull out a stat that we submitted as a part of our application that speaks to how much farmland solar consumes. It is on 0.12% of total farmland, excuse me, total land in the state and 0.28% of agricultural land. Less than 1%, 1/3 of 1% is taken up by solar. The farmland losses, not due to solar, is due to other uses. And I would like to correct Mr. Terrell's comment about the number of years that the panels can operate for. The 25 years that he quoted is how long they're under warranty for. Anybody who's had a car and driven it past, you know, 100,000 miles knows that, you know, equipment lasts longer than it's warranty for, but that was the confusion in between those two numbers. It is not estimated that the solar farm will replace any panels during its 40-year lifetime. At year 40, the panels are operating at, as they estimate, about 83% of their nameplate rating. Thanks.
Next.
Yes, sir. It's Joanne Summerlin.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning. I'm Joanne Summerlin. I'm here on behalf of my brother, William Earl Cruz, and I believe each one of you have a letter from him in your possession. But he could not be here today due to a heart procedure that was an emergency that had to be taking place out of town. So I'm here to read, just simply to read the letter on his behalf. So the Cruz family has been farmland in this county for over 100 years or more, and we pride ourselves in forming the lands here in Wayne County and feel that we have contributed greatly into the economy of Wayne County. The lands my family own that are subject to the solar project are just a small portion of our lands. Due to the economy, I have seen the cost of growing crops escalate tremendously while the selling price of these crops have gone to what they were selling for about 50 years ago. So that's really lopsided. If you were allowed, if we are allowed to proceed with this solar project, this would help supplement our income while at the same time it would be good for the county by expanding its tax base without a strain on county resources. This project would be good, clean source of energy, and in years to come, if it were no longer needed for this purpose, it would be returned to farming. And I am a longtime citizen of Wayne County and feel that I should be heard on these issues. I would appreciate your consideration on these matters. So this is signed by William Earl Cruz. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
That is all of the, those signed up to speak publicly on this particular...
So do we do, do we need to go ahead and continue with the next one, or do we need to close the topic here? Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Prior to closing this, counsel, would you give us an explanation of our roles as the Board of Adjustment versus Board of Commissioners?
You're sitting as a quasi-judicial board to make findings of fact and based on the evidence that you have heard and decide whether or not you are going to approve this solar facility with the conditions that have been presented to you today.
Now, the reason I asked you to do that is my understanding, over the years of sitting as a Board of Adjustment, we have to determine our decision based upon the facts. Is that correct?
That's correct. Not somebody's opinion, the facts.
Or our personal opinion. Which is a little bit different from the role of us sitting as Board of Commissioners. And I just want to make sure that everyone's aware that we're sitting as a Board of Adjustment. Thank you so much.
Anybody got anything else?
I do.
Yes, sir.
With this particular project, how many families are involved in this land? Eight families agree to moving forward.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any others? Let's see, that being, when it comes to the facts, the part that Mr. Vincent showed as far as the floodwater, has that got any bearing on anything? Is that an issue? The other thing I need to ask is, we were told that we did not have in writing a letter from Seymour Johnson yet, or they did not have a letter.
It's in the book.
It is in the book? Okay. Ask David, ask that question.
Well, may I? Since the hearing's not closed, you asked to the flooding, the evidence has to show that it harmed somebody. There was nothing that came out about how the flooding would be exacerbated or enhanced or increased, if there is. Nothing also was in that gentleman's testimony about how solar would be different than any other use in the county.
Well, I think what he was saying is just as far as the solar part, the solar panels being put in where the floodwater was at, I think that was what he was talking about.
If they're...
Based on my understanding.
If by regulation they cannot be there, they cannot be there, same as anybody.
But I think, I think what he was relating to is about that picture, where that picture's at now. Did you see the pictures?
Yes.
Did they see the pictures? The way he's showing right there is that's well past where the 100-year floods was, was he saying. That's what I'm, you know, as far as what he's talking about, where he, if I understood him right, and I guess...
I mean, there is a significant portion of the, you know, that comes on the other side. Excuse me. There is a portion of the solar farm, well, you can see on the site plan, the 100-year floodplain comes on the east side of the road in a fairly significant, you know, degree. There's probably 25 acres of...
And that's part of where he's talking about, right there.
Right. And so I guess what I'm saying is there won't be any equipment there.
So let me ask you a question. The turkey farm that he related to, is that the one behind it? And I'm asking him, not you.
Yes, there is.
That's the one to the right. That goes behind, sort of behind my house. There's one, there's one right there out, this goes back to Sutton Road.
So it's on the Sutton Road side and not the, right here? Yeah, yeah. Okay. I got it. So can we get the, can we get the map up there just to make sure we're all on the same page? Can we get the map up there on the screen?
I have a quick question while we're doing it. Does the state or federal government say certain areas in the city that have been in the 100-year floodplain? You can't build on them again, you can't do but so much with them. Like, I mean, you might could do some farming on it or growing or whatever. Does those regulations affect solar panels?
Yes.
So this land has been cleared, and there's no regulation stating that you can't put them up there because of the flooding or anything?
Not quite. So I'll just point it out here, if I may. This right here is the 100-year floodplain that I believe is what, you know, I believe is what that picture shows, and there is no equipment that will go within this 100-year floodplain. The equipments are, actually, the 100-year floodplain comes all the way like this, you can see it kind of jagged based on where the hatched area is. So there'll be no equipment in that area. To your question, yes, the turkey farms are on the east side of some of the hatched area.
Well, he's talking about the turkey farm, he's talking about the one at the bottom, 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 right, right there.
Oh, these right here?
Yes.
And they were water where you ain't got out of it.
I mean, this, this conversation is just for y'all's, just as much for y'all's, you know, uh, as it is theirs, so. I don't think, I think we're done with the, well, Mr. Board, once they've already done their four minutes, they can come back, is that correct?
Unless the Board of Adjustment lets them come back.
What's the, what's the consensus of the board?
I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with it because you, we're trying to get both sides of it. I don't, I, I was thinking that everything was kind of sort of cleared from the water aspect of it, but if they're saying that it's not clear, then that's something different.
No, you need to be up here by the microphone.
I want to say that map does not show where the water was.
In the first meeting they had, which was very secretive, we didn't know it was a meeting until the day of the meeting, they kind of hid this from us. And I told this gentleman right here, I said, "You need to see me, I can show you pictures of where water was," and I, I've never seen or heard from him since, so. But that's, there was water places that they put the solar.
Got you.
And I don't think electricity and, and water needs to go together.
Could I ask?
Sir?
Yes, sir.
Don't want to get too much of the weeds. How deep was the water at, at that location?
You couldn't drive through it.
Uh, yeah, you couldn't drive through it. On Sutton Road, where it flooded the turkeys, out of the turkey farm on the right across the highway, I could go through there with a high four-wheel drive truck, but it was up, running the doors if you'd opened the door. It was six foot deep in places. I rode a boat across a lot of it.
So show three to four feet.
Yeah.
So show how, how far.
But the water crossed the highway right on down to St. John's Church Road. It might not have been but a foot deep, but there was water in those fields across the highway. Yeah.
Well, you can't, you didn't sign it, wait, say.
Can I say something?
No, you can't, you, you didn't sign it on the signature paper. I'm sorry.
They were on the other end, they got flooded too.
I understand.
So my, my question is now, I mean.
Oh, I got one more question. The eight families, where did that come from? Because I tend 200 acres from one man. Uh, the Cruzes and then these, uh.
Who the man? These Cruzes?
I don't know where the eight families come from, I can't, I can't count them four. So, anyway, that's the families that's going to profit and everybody else.
But they got in-laws.
There's a few out.
Right.
Okay, all right, so, Mr. Frost.
Yeah, so, the, where the turkey houses sit, correct?
Mm-hmm.
From there on back where the solar, because the solar farm's sitting behind those, correct?
Right, they were water across the highway here, but it, it came through here, it was six foot deep here, but it came through here, it washed turkey out of East Turkey House. I crossed Sutton Road about 10 years.
Okay.
I can talk a little bit about systems that I know have been flooded, if that's helpful.
Well, I just want to know what, why wasn't this addressed in the original plans? If, you know what I'm saying, if, if, if there are any regulations on it, why wasn't it addressed already?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any regulations.
If the other, if the other spot was kind of sort of addressed, but there are no regulations stating anything about flooding or anything else.
Great, that's, that's my understanding, that it's not outside of the 100-year floodplain, but I, I know from my work inspecting sites for utilities, we saw a number after the hurricane, I think it was 2016 or 2017, in Robinson County area where sites were, were flooded by three to five feet of water. And in some cases, there was some equipment that had to be replaced, but by and large, the panels weren't, weren't damaged. And most of the times, the panels themselves are on a rack four to five feet off the ground. Those can be rotated horizontally, so they, I mean, the water's got to get about five feet high before it's touching a panel. If you just flatten your, your panels out, uh, even if the panels do get submerged, it's likely most of them are not going to be damaged. They're, have a junction box on the back that's all sealed with watertight plastics. I mean, they're ready to be rained on for 40 years. Uh, there's some of the ground-mounted electronic equipment that could be damaged, but usually those are built up three or four feet, they'll build a little raised area to put most of that equipment, or it's on poles, small equipment's on poles also, three or four feet off the ground. So you got to be at least three feet of flood before anything that possibly is going to be damaged is damaged. And it's pretty limited damage you would get if, if it goes above that.
Thanks, sir. Any other questions? All right, close the cover here. All right, what's the pleasure, the Board, on the Piney Grove Solar Energy Facility? And you're saying that we've got, whoever's got the letter from Seymour Johnson, is that correct?
It's supposed to be in the book right there, in the last, last, the last, well, next to the last section.
Next to the last section.
Seymour Johnson letter, it's in one of the tabs?
Oh, I got it, yep, 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 yep. And this is the part about the, uh, the panels, the, um, just the letter about the, what it was, a yellow, green, Barry, you have come up here and tell us about.
Right, that, that is included in that letter. The letter was provided to the applicant early on, so they do have those as well as our staff report that lists those conditions, they have that as well, uh, they represented that. So those three conditions are in your staff report, they came directly off of the letter from Seymour Johnson, and that does include the, um, the yellow and green glare that they compared with the recommendation to reduce the glint and glare with a particular material. So, yeah, all that's included in those conditions.
All right, so, now, this is a question I got, I need to ask to Mr. Board of you, so, so they have, the solar facility has presented everything that the ordinance requires them to present, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and the way the ordinance is written, it is, um, based on the, the, the facts that they submitted, we are, for lack of a better word, pretty much obligated to vote in favor?
Unless you think that somebody else who's presented facts to you, that their facts outweigh the facts that were presented by the proponents.
All right, so, and I understand what, and I can't remember which one he is on the, or the other one, the guy, what he was talking about, about the actual flooding part, you know, electricity and water don't work together. Um, and it's got to get a certain, certain height, but you're, but basically what I understood him to say is the facilities in Robinson County, I think it was, um, are they still in operation? You ain't got to come up and say this.
Yes, sir, they are, yes.
All right. So, so you're saying that the floodwaters does not, does not in, have a adverse effect on the solar facility?
Depending on the height, it could damage some equip, some equipment and some of those sites were replaced, but minimal amount of equipment. Panels, my warnings were not, did not.
So I guess my next question would be the, the part that Mr. Vincent submitted about the pictures about the floodwaters, and I know, in my experience, uh, some of the flood maps may not be up to speed based on the amount of impervious surface that we have along the news from Raleigh to Wayne, Lenore, right on through, and the floodwaters go in places that we've not seen them before, uh, a lot of times. Is that something that we need to consider on the, um, in our, for them to study more for that? I'm not saying, not to, not to vote for the, the part of it, but I'm saying, do they need to study where they can and can't put solar panels? Is that something we need to look at? Or is that, would that be considered a expert?
I think you could take the, the testimony from the expert and make a finding of fact from that.
Got a question for Barry.
Go ahead, Wayne's got a question.
I got a question for her. Barry, when was the last time the floodplains were updated?
In 2018. And you got to keep in mind, we're talking about the 100-year floodplain, which is the regulated floodplain by FEMA. And so these panels are removed out of the regulated floodplain. The areas, and I always tell people, just because you're not in a 100-year floodplain doesn't mean you can't flood. Any property in this county, whether you're in 500-year, no floodplain, you can flood. I mean, most folks had water around their homes in 2016 and 2018 and nowhere near a floodplain. So you can have standing water at any point and have issues, so don't think you can't flood outside, but in terms of regulation, what we have, our flood ordinance, we're bound by regulating within the 100-year floodplain, that's for FEMA. So outside of that, we're, our hands are tied in terms of our flood ordinance. Yep.
And I can attest to what you just said, Barry.
All right, what's the pleasure, Board, on the Piney Grove Solar Facility? Do you want to take action today or at a later date?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
According to all the facts that we've heard, I ask that we approve the special use permit for Piney Grove Solar Energy Facility.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve Piney Grove, uh, Solar Facility. Is there any other discussion?
Subject to the things that.
Yes, subject to.
What Barry has said.
Yes, subject to all of the, um, planning department's recommendations.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman. Go ahead, Joe. I'm moved by the testimonies, but based upon our regulations and based upon what we currently have in place in regards to, uh, finding the facts, I, I find that basically I'm going to have to vote for this because I don't think I've got any wiggle room out of it. Um, and with that said, I think that this county has got to take a real serious look in regards to what we have in place, um, for solar facilities. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Wayne, Commissioner, call.
I, I don't know, I'm caught on the fence from this one. Like Joe says, if it meets all of the, all of the requirements, you know, I'm probably going to have to vote for it, but I just got, I, I'd rather vote no, but I know that that would, I'd be inserting my personal feelings, uh, but Barry, I understand that you are working on a, a new plan for the county, but I know, you know, your, your work is not, you're shaking no and he's shaking yes.
We're, we're looking at, um, we're looking at things like our current ordinance.
This is one of the toughest things I've spent before this board, and I've been on this board 11 years, and I, I just, uh, I really don't know which good way to go, but if I, as an elected official, and it meets all of the criteria, uh, I've got to take my personal feelings out of it. And I just want, all y'all to know that, but. Anybody else that's got anything going?
Um, yes, uh, I don't, last time we had a solar farm in front of us, I, I was totally against it. Even some of the questions that were answered this time were questions that I had last time, and I think they were kind of sort of prepared for that already. Uh, I'm always torn between the community wanting something versus business. And right now, I, I'm, it's kind of sort of hard because when the gentleman spoke, I don't can't remember his name, about farming and seven employees that feed their seven families, that's big to me, you know, so that's, that's weighing on me heavy, um, and like I said, I've always been against them up until this point, but it's, then we have a family that's stating that they, they want to lease their land to do it. So it's like, I, I wish that the farmer and the family could have came to an agreement to do something to keep farming going and to also be able to do this, but I, I don't know, I, I don't own the land, I don't have anything to do with that, and it's kind of sort of, like I said, it's, it's, it's personal because I understand that, but then at the same time, the business side of it, we have an obligation to, uh, go off the facts and what's presented in front of us, so.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'm also a farmer, come from a farm, I'm probably one of the few who's plowed with a mule, and I can tell you, this is a hard decision, but based on the responsibility of the Board of Adjustments, we have to go off the facts.
Any others?
If you abstain, if you abstain, that's a yes, Barry.
That's a yes, bro.
Well, I'll go ahead and tell you my, my philosophy on this. Um, number one, uh, like I say, electricity and water don't work together. Um, and I'll say, I'll go further, uh, the farmland part is, is, I guess it's probably the biggest thing, and the reason being is when we were in Wake County here probably six months ago at a meeting, um, they made a comment that they had overdeveloped their county and could not produce enough vegetables and crops to feed the ones that, the 100,000 as they called it, uh, uh, that were going hungry. So, you know, my position as a county commissioner, I would, um, that's our, that's our number one thing is to plan for the future of our, for our county down the road, because they made a comment, they said, "We can't produce our own, but we'll buy yours." So basically what they were saying is, "We got the money and we're going to strip your crops from your county, so you got to go looking for somewhere else," because the bottom line is, everybody's looking for the dollar. I mean, that's just, that's just human nature. Everybody wants the money, and you got to have money to survive. Um, I get it for the, uh, for the landowner, um, the landowner, uh, is the one that is, and a lot of them are, a lot of them are getting up in age, uh, as far as the, the farming part of it. I get it, I mean, I got, uh, I got an aging parent and I know what it costs for him to, to live, especially with health issues. But as all of them have stated, as the Board of Adjustments, we're, we're like a judge, a panel of judges, and we've got to go off the actual factual stuff. Um, anyway, that's what I got to say. The, um, the timeframe, you said it was 2027. Okay, so what I would ask, um, uh, in the, in this, in this, uh, motion, can we add the part of them studying the, uh, the flooded areas? Can we add that into a condition or not?
I think that they're taking the position is that if they feel like that there's flood, they're not going to put their equipment.
But what I'm saying is the, the, the map doesn't show where it flooded, but reality, somebody that sees it and they show pictures there, do we, can we take that in consideration as part of the, I mean, it's not going to take out everything, it's, it might take out a certain portion of it where it goes through. Is that something that we need to address? I mean, I think far as a safety factor, uh, for the, for the county, is the reason I'm asking. Is that something that we can put as the condition for them to, for them to study that part of, of the actual flooded area or not?
Well, if, if you're asking them to study it, they can say that they have already studied it, or they can study it, and do you want them to come back to you and tell you what they have determined?
Well, I would, yeah, I would want to know what the answer is, I mean, based on, I mean, but I guess what I'm asking, before we would put that in condition, is there anything that they can go back on or go, go to, to, uh, to get actual facts? There's not?
Regulation is based on whatever current FEMA flood map is adopted currently. FEMA doesn't regulate anything.
doesn't regulate anything outside of the 100-year.
All right. That answers that question. So any more discussion? We got a motion on the floor to approve the Pine Grove Solar Energy Facility based on the facts that were presented before us, if you would please. Special vote.
Do I have to?
Yes, sir. Mine didn't come up.
Mine didn't come up either, yes. I voted.
Hold on, I'm going to reset it because it's not coming through.
Do you want to vote again?
Mine didn't come up.
There it is. My laptop timed out. Look, it's been three hours.
Did it come up or anything?
Mine came up.
Yeah, mine came up.
Okay, well, it's not popping up in mine. Just raise your hand.
All in favor, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand.
The vote passed four to two.
All right. So we are, so I got to open up another public hearing, correct?
Yes, sir.
Give me just a moment, please. I apologize, but I need to make sure that I have everything down manually.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess. But can we do that?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay, we're back in session. We're going to open the public hearing for the Turtle Cove Solar Facility. Barry?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Yeah, this is your second special use request for Turtle Cove Solar. The developer applicant is Renewable Energy Services and this one is in Sawston Township in the vicinity of Hood Swamp Road, Watershed Road, and LaGrange Road. This is a 60-megawatt facility that's proposed, located on 750 acres with 594 acres built out or built upon. Excuse me, this is in the Outer Horizontal Overlay District, the Approach Area Overlay District, and both of those are our airport overlays. And there is some small part into RA-20, but all three of those require a special use, which of course is why this one is as well as before you, as a board of adjustment. We do have comments from Seymour Johnson Air Force Base. We did send those to them, and you do have those included in your packet, in your report. They're conditions that they reported back. Again, since this is a special use, there are findings of facts. I will not read through those again, but they are in your packet, A through E, in your staff report, and listed for the record there. And also additional restrictions, you can apply conditions to this as well, which we are, as I said, staff is recommending the conditions that were the same as the previous case for Seymour Johnson Air Force Base.
So we've got letters in the packet?
You do. Those letters are in your packet with those three conditions, and we've included it in our report.
Yes, I'm reading it now.
And also you have your supporting documents as evidence that has been presented in your packet, so I want to enter those into the record as well. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Is all this in Wayne County?
This is, yes, sir.
So Watershed Park, I see it now, never mind. Anybody got any questions for Barry?
I think you've gone through, I mean, again, very expansive piece. Have you gone through each one of these areas to validate that the setbacks and the buffers are required per hour ordinance?
We have. We have, and the planning board reviews that as well. All they do is look at the site plan to ensure that it complies with the ordinance.
And in looking at this map, look is rather small, but in looking at it, are any of them up next to any subdivisions?
There are no subdivisions in terms of what we consider a major subdivision adjacent to this. There are some places where they have made some adjustments based on property owner concern when they met with property owners. So there are few places where you'll see that it has been adjusted above and beyond what the county requires, but unlike the other one, there's not an actual subdivision similar to Dobbs County Estates.
But individual property owners and residents ask for additional buffer maybe?
Right, right.
So would we be better off, well, never mind, so it's got to be a certain size subdivision before they get that 250-foot deal?
No, that 250-foot deal is what they offer just to address neighbor concerns.
Okay.
That's not in our ordinance, but they went ahead and did that just because there was a subdivision there and that you did be some concern.
So evidently there's been communication between the firm and adjoining property owners?
Right, there has been some.
But they negotiated what that setback was?
Right, right.
Okay. So that part up at the top of the, at the top on the, off of Oakdale, the 100-year deal, 100-year flood?
Right.
They've got just like solar panels right up to the, right up to it, is that right?
Right, yeah, they do have the panels up to the 100-year, but not within.
Right.
Yep. And in this case, there is no 500-year floodplain designated in this area. Again, does it mean you can't flood outside of a 100-year floodplain? There is no other flood designation there.
I'm trying to make sure I got this. Where's Bethel Church at?
Bethel Church is...
Oh, they were all, I mean...
That is, that's on Hood Swamp, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right, um...
I'm trying to find Hood Swamp Road. I see Watershed.
Watershed is just above, or Hood Swamp's just above Watershed. It's hard to see, but if you, if you look up into Green County, at the very top of the page, you see a road called Oakdale.
Yeah, I knew that's where.
Oakdale turns into Hood Swamp as it comes in.
That's where I was trying, that's where the 100-year, I mean, yeah.
And then probably when you come into Wayne County off of Oakdale, turns into Hood Swamp, there's a little, there's a curve there where it curves, and I think the church is right in there.
It is, yeah. I was just like, I thought there was a, I thought there was some water right there at the county line, but evidently there ain't. All right. Anybody got any questions for Barry? All right.
I assume we're all still under oath.
Yes, sir. It was the same four, correct?
It's the same four, yes, ma'am.
Right, I won't need to swear anyone in until the public speaks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, I'll introduce myself again, just for the record. I'm Tom Terrell with the law firm Fox Rothschild. I represent residential, I'm sorry, Renewable Energy Services, R E S, but specifically Turtle Cove Solar. To keep this a little bit shorter, I'm going to incorporate by reference just about everything I said at the beginning of the previous hearing. I will make two changes. The first is, for Commissioner Akok, I am going to do my best to say "facility," and I saw you wrote the word "facility" up. Feel free to flag me if I missed. The second thing, farming was a big issue that came up in the last hearing. Farming is really not one of the standards. I know it's a policy issue, but as Commissioner Hardison said, he is also a farmer. I would like to say, I am glad that there's nobody in government who could tell my family we have to farm. We're subject to cattle price. We got a large, on 752 records, we have had a large, now it's a Red Angus cattle operation, used to be Charley. We're subject to weather patterns that we don't control. We are subject to prices we don't control. We have costs that go up, and even when we own the land, we own our equipment, and we get free labor, meat, we still cannot meet all of our costs. We just had, we just sold on November 14th, way before my dad died, he got a chance to see the largest check we have ever gotten from the sale of cows. 22% of that check goes to finish paying our expenses for 2023 and doesn't even go over into 2024. I'm just, so I'm glad that there's not somebody to tell us that we have to farm. Now, we're going to convert it to some other type of operation, probably pines, because we're hilly and we've got lots of trees. But I just want to make that point to address the policy issue, the home farming. Our notebook that we presented at the last hearing is basically identical to the notebook that we just handed you. We have the application, we addressed the findings of fact. Again, we got into whether or not obligated to make your decision based on the facts. I appreciated that. I'll just only add to that, that it's the facts as they apply to the special use permit issues, and any issue or question outside of that, there may be facts on it, but it's not material, it's not germane to the question. But the site plan, if you like to say, the site plan is essentially the same in its structure, in that it shows you where the extra buffers are, but this site plan has 100%, it meets the county standards, or it exceeds the county standards. There are changes that were made to the site plan because this company met personally with the neighbors, they listened to the neighbors, they've communicated, and there have been changes made. The same thing on the landscape buffers, this is designed so that they won't, facility won't be seen. Health and safety market impact study essentially are the same, except they are for Turtle Cove. You can ignore the glare study and look at the summary in the front four pages, but bottom line is Seymour Johnson has signed off on this, and everything that they recommend, this company will adopt. They actually say "should," they recommend it, but we will make it a "shall" in the conditions. On the Seymour Johnson letter is in the notebook, and the decommissioning study is here, but the bottom line on that is, we're moving to a state system where decommissioning is controlled. It's taken away a little bit from the developers, taken a little bit away from you, but there will be a bond. That's the bottom line that I think everybody needs to know, this is going to be a bonded facility. Mr. Dellafield is going to follow me, he's going to do a much quicker PowerPoint. We're just getting information into the record, but he'll go quicker. We still want to be able to answer any and all questions that you have.
How many families are involved, or how many?
That will be Mr. Dellafield and Mr. Shenpawson.
For all of them.
I think it's eight again.
It's eight, it's eight families involved again. And again, there may not be more than eight tracts, but it's, sometimes land can be owned by multiple fucks.
Good afternoon, my name is Tom Dellafield. I'm Director of Project Development for Renewable Energy Services, here representing Turtle Cove Solar. I will seek to go a little bit faster as the presentation is demonstrably similar. One quick correction, this solar farm is 72 megawatts, not 60, as Barry stated. There was some last-minute, I guess, land changes based on public information meetings and kind of things that occurred at the last second. That is enough for, and as you can see, it was originated in August of this year, just ahead of the utility deadline. It did give us enough time to do all the studies that we needed to, but nonetheless came together rather quickly. It is enough to power 9,000 homes, also may incorporate battery storage at Duke's discretion, produces slightly more in net new taxes for the county, and is also carrying the request for a special use permit with that five years of extended vesting. This is a look at the site map. Total project area is 750 acres, area inside the fence line closer to 400. The reason that the delta is smaller on this project is that there are not as many very large wetland features. You do see some highlighted in that turquoise kind of dotted area, such as on Hood Swamp Road, and there are some others on LaGrange Road and so on. Those areas will not be developed in, and the area and outside, excuse me, the area inside the fence line plus the required setbacks will be what make up the lease area.
So you're saying the area that's, that's got the little blue or turquoise dots on it, that is the part that's not going to be?
Correct, that is delineated wetland. So that has been, it hasn't yet gone to the U.S. Army Corps for them to confirm that, and that's because their, you know, wetland findings are still in flux, but what's in flux about the wetlands is not really any wetlands of this sort, it's isolated wetlands. Basically, if there is one spot in the middle of a field, you know, that is something that could potentially be developed in, that's what's kind of in question. These larger features, if they drain to a water of the USA, they're part of a larger water network, that is not up for revision. The project here shown with the orange star is about seven and a half miles due east of Goldsboro and about six and a half miles northeast of Seymour Johnson. This project is on a similar timeframe. We've done a number of studies, hosted public information meetings as a part of this process where we took feedback, made changes to the site plan. Happy to list some of those off if you guys would like. And this project has been submitted into the Duke Energy RFP. It's on the same time track as the other project, putting its final announcement in May of '24, with finalists announced in December, or excuse me, in January. If selected, would also track for something like a 2027 start date, but that is subject to Duke's timelines. Site's designed, adheres to, or exceeds all the county setback requirements, 50-foot setbacks from adjoining property lines and roadways to the fence line with a minimum of a 75-foot setback to improved areas. This project carries a 200-foot setback from principal buildings for residential setbacks. And that is different from the 100-foot principal building setback that the county requires, so we've doubled that. Buffers within that setback is the 25-foot vegetative buffer. We will preserve existing vegetation where we can, implant the vegetation in accordance with the county's ordinance where it needs to be, and then on the northern boundary of the project, we will be preserving the windbreak there at the request of the neighboring farmer. Other design specifications, similar to the last one, avoid wetlands, preserve ag ditches, not be in the 100-year floodplain, will preserve existing access easements. We would also like to do the wildlife-friendly fencing on this project, and with, as the other one, we'll be covering the grass with a native grass and exploring pollinator habitat by the gate entrances. Solar is a low-impact use. Property values analysis shows no impact as a result of no noise, light, odor, vibration, or traffic. Health and safety assessment details the same. And here again, you see slightly different but demonstrably similar landscape renderings of one-year, three-year, and five-year growth. Operations and maintenance, excuse me, are the same, 24-hour remote monitoring, regular inspections on different components of the solar farm depending on what best practices kind of dictate, and as needed maintenance should anything break or malfunction. Decommissioning as well, subject to the state ordinance under House Bill 130. If not, security will be provided in favor of the landlords as defined in the lease agreements. Once again, all this land will be leased, none of it will be purchased. And again, you have the, a look at the value of the system over time. Even into year 20, the value of the system far exceeds the cost to remove it. Benefits, this one also carries an increase in the net new taxes of 3.2 million. Year one taxes are 1.55,000 versus almost 7,700. This project also will reduce the air pollution and produce public health benefit, and carries a similar amount of construction jobs. Again, these are kind of approximates based on the scale of the project. That will ultimately be determined by, you know, the construction folks who work on it, but the project is determined, or excuse me, is committed to working with Wayne County Development Alliance and the county chamber to utilize local contractors and suppliers. And again, solar has no demand on tax-funded or county services. Sorry, I'll skip through the comp plan. I'm happy to talk through some of the points again, but I kind of breezed through it in the last one. I'll just show the growth strategy areas map, and see again that the project is outside of urban and adjacent areas, so it would be better suited for other forms of residential. It does adjoin one rural residential enclave, however, solar is harmonious with rural and rural residential uses for the reasons outlined on previous slides, and that is temporary, low intensity that does not cause pollution or nuisances that could alter or detract from other uses, no personnel on site, no land, water, air pollution, no noise, light, or odor, and it will be screened from adjoining residences. Conservation areas, this project is outside of those, and will avoid development in any 100-year floodplain and be permitted by NCT EQ. Any questions?
Yeah, what's an enclave?
That is a term from the comp plan, but it's just a small, small area, small group of houses, I suppose.
Okay, small subdivision.
I suppose.
Yeah, okay. Enclave. Anybody got any questions?
Thank you so much.
Anybody else talking, or is that it?
Yes, my name again is, for the record, Tommy Cleveland at 4141 Laurel Hills Road in Raleigh. As I've said in the previous hearing, all that still applies here. I've got a deep background in solar energy and health and safety in particular, and I prepared a health and safety assessment report for this project and came to the conclusion that it would not adversely affect public health or safety. I'd be glad to answer any questions if anybody has them.
Anybody got any questions?
All right, thank you.
I think Mr. Park will appreciate me saying this, so that there is brevity for this. We will adopt by record, by reference, anything we said in the previous hearing if that question comes up, so that we don't have to repeat it right now. Great.
Hi, my name is Nick Kirkland with Kirkland Appraisals. Again, I'm a state-certified general appraiser in Kentucky, Virginia, and North Carolina. I've been accepted as an expert in property value impact hundreds of times, and I'm here to present the Kirkland Appraisals Impact Study. The methodology that we utilize is review of university studies on property value impacts due to solar farms, as well as matched pair and paired sales analyses. We have data from Wayne County and from the local area, which shows that homes next to solar farms do not sell for any less or significantly more than other nearby homes, and are, and that solar farms are not a negative impact on adjoining property values. It's my professional opinion that the proposed Turtle Cove Solar will not negatively impact the adjoining property values, and I'm happy to answer any questions or go in step by step through the impact study if you like.
Anybody got any questions? All right, thank you. All right, Carol, who do we, how many do we got?
We have four individuals.
All four need to come up, so you can get someone in.
Ron Hess, Joe Young, Wallace Creech, and K.A. Thompson, please.
I already did this the last time. Can I do it again?
Let's go ahead and do it again, just to make sure. I've got to wait for this. And your name is?
Ron Hess.
You're Ron?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, what I'm going to ask is if you guys can scoot down so he can sit somewhere right there once he's done. And your name, sir?
Perry Thompson.
Okay.
Flash.
Okay, I got you. And you are?
Wallace Creech.
Okay, so I don't have Joe Young. Okay, left hand, raise your right. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you shall give to the board in this action shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
I do.
All right. And Mr. Hess, if you would like to start, Mr. Thompson, if you'd like to sit down right here for just a moment? Can I get it for you, sir?
Sure, that'd be great.
You'll just sit right here, I'll get, I'll be glad to get it.
Yeah, just a minute.
Just a minute, okay, we'll leave it back.
Yes, sir, you're going to get your time slowly.
Get ready to do that.
I got it. Sardine.
Okay.
My name's Ron Hess, I live at 7205 Gruper Court in Wilmington, and I'm here representing my wife and her three siblings, that they own a property at the corner of Watershed and LaGrange Road. And it's about 85 acres, and I think about 50 of it would be dedicated to the solar. They've owned the land, they inherited it from their dad, who inherited it from his mother, whose name was Sally Parks, who lived in Wayne County. So there's a connection there going, in fact, I just looked at the deed the other night where he got the land from his mother, and it was 100 years ago to this, this year in 2023. It's 1923 is when he originally inherited it. We are very much in favor of this, and the reason is because of the financial part of it, that for our grandkids, we have, between the four siblings, there are four grandchildren and eight grandchildren, or eight, four children and eight grandchildren. And it's a way to provide them with some, some money for college. Who knows what, what'll come up in a 40-year period? But I'm 81 years old, so it isn't going to benefit me much of any, any time at all, so I'm not worried about that, but it does secure some income at least for those, those kids. And the other thing it does, which we, was, the thing that sold us was it kept the land in the family, that it's a lease, not a sale, that we could have sold the land, but that wasn't the deal, and this, this just made a whole lot of sense to us, that increase, right now, it's farmed, about 50 acres of it is farmed, and this will triple, initially triple the income that, the partnership, that it's held as an LLC, that that LLC will, will get from the, the payments for this. So we thought that was a pretty, pretty good deal. That's really about the only thing I have to say. I would give you, I personally, we have solar on our house in Wilmington, and just to give you an idea, we've had it for 12 years. We got it in 2011, and our average bill in 2023 for, from Duke Energy is less than $60. It's about $58.75 average bill throughout the year. We, we estimate that we're saving about $1,400 to $1,500 a year in terms of our electric bill, and we're an all-electric community. There's no gas available, so that's, just as an aside, I think that it, financially, it's, it's a good deal. I'm not a tree hugger, so I'm not, we didn't do it because of that, the fact, it's just a bonus that it impacts the environment, it's positive for the environment. So unless you've got any questions, I'm, I'm done.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, now, Mr. Wallace Creech.
My name is Wallace Creech. My brother and I are the last descendants of Frida Parks Creek. She was the heir of 877 LaGrange Road, which is about 134 acres of... She was the heir of 877 LaGrange Road, which is about 134 acres of farmland. Parks people have been running around on that land since the 1700s. It's been in our family that long. We have been good stewards of the land in that it is very productive, and we have producers that are smart, educated, and aggressive, and do a good job as well as anybody that you can put up against them in Wayne County. That being said, it is incumbent on us to make the best use of that land. And it's nice to see that somebody is worried about losing 100 acres of prime farmland and into some other activity. The facts of the matter are, the federal government and everything surrounding farming is squeezing the farmer. Everything from fertilizer to diesel fuel to labor is making it such that it's harder for a farmer to make a living off this land. And again, it is incumbent on us, because we and only we own it, to make the best use of it. We have an opportunity here. Well, it's only, this land is only good for one or two things. One of them is farming. That is becoming less and less profitable. It could be possibly turned into a subdivision or something else, but that would require us selling the farm and paying everybody in the world taxes on it, so that we end up with nothing. This is a good opportunity to get the best return on our investment. And I have already asked them most of the questions that y'all asked. The answers were okay as far as I was concerned, and we are fully behind this project, the whole farm. And we want just as much put into this new crop, this solar farm, which is going to be the best use of this land, still retaining it in our family.
I think that pretty much sums it up.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right, and now we have K.A. Thompson, please.
Anyway, I solely concur with Mr. Creech. In fact, his is one of the families that we allowed a portion of the property to go to, to be a good neighbor and not make anything landlocked. Anyway, my name is Carrie Thompson. I know many of you and had the pleasure of working with a few of you over the years. I'm a longtime general contractor in the area and farmer, worked for DSMs for many years and branched out on my own. I have worked on numerous community improvement projects over the year, including saving many historic buildings and homes from being torn down. Some of those projects you might recognize are, I fully restored the Borden Building. I moved the old county office building and the sheriff's department, worked at your landfill, worked on the city council chambers, and I worked on the gates down at fencing down at the new bus transfer station. I was able to keep and restore Fire Station Number One, and I own 117, 124, and 126 North Center. I also worked on Chris's Fire Department at one time, adding another bay years ago.
That's been a long time.
Has been quite a while. I have lived in Goldsboro for 51 years, except for when I was in college, and grew up on the family farm consisting of the land area being discussed. This land has been in my family for, since 1800, I can track back, but Wallace has obviously done more research than I have. As you can probably tell through my current use of crutches, working countless hours in construction, to the benefit of all that construction in my hometown, has worn me down over the years. While I'm on the path to physical recovery, this proposal would be life-changing for me and my family for years to come. This project will help financially support me as I grow older, take a much-needed physical break from many years of hard labor. This project will help support me in paying the medical bills, wow, over the past nine months and going forward as well. This project will also ensure that I set my kids up for success. The financial proceeds will be put into a family trust that will help pay off college debt for my children and will be used as college tuition for my grandchildren, hopefully. This will also be potentially used to help pay down their first houses. My support of this project is in no way a desire for me to use it myself, this truly is for all of my family in the future. This is truly a progress legacy, and what I intend to leave is my lasting legacy and impact for the family. On a non-personal note, this project will help bring our community's financial resources up without constraining those financial resources of the county in any way. I'm hopeful that this land will return us in many years, when the contract is up, restore it to farmland, which will be easy to do at that time. And I grew up on that farm and cropped tobacco and did every part of it at one time. When I was approached about this project, my son and I ensured to finalize deals and sales of our longtime neighbors, the Matthews head and the Creech families. We wanted to make sure that we weren't hanging them out to dry and have talked with most of the neighbors verbally. Any section of it that they wanted, we made sure we came up with a deal to make that happen.
Mr. Thompson, we got it.
I believe we've all done our due diligence in setting this project up for success while maintaining good terms to our neighbors to land in question. I humbly ask you to approve this project.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much.
Is that all?
That's it.
No, I'm talking to Carol, sorry. Is that all the?
Yes, sir, that is everyone that has signed up to speak.
All right.
At this point, you can close the public hearing.
Public hearing is closed for the Turtle Cove Solar Facility. All right, yes, sir.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion at the board that we approve the Turtle Cove Solar Energy Facility based on the planning department's recommendations.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Any questions? With the conditions of the, I'm seeing more Johnson.
I won't come up again.
With all the conditions that?
That the planning board. Yes. Right, will you amend that to all the conditions on plan?
With all the conditions that the planning board recommends. Department, thank you.
I'm logged out.
How would you guys vote? Just vote by raising your hand.
I take it that was a yes?
That was a yes by everybody.
All right, let's see, we got, so we adjourned, we're adjourned to Wayne County Board of Adjustments and reconvening the Wayne County Board of Commissioners. We'll have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Whoa. Okay. Is it going to pop up now? Who made that motion?
Joe.
About three of us.
Give me the Joe.
Mr. Acock, did yours pop up for consent agenda?
He's totally out of this. I'm completely out.
That's okay, I'll vote for you.
All right, public comments.
We have one signed up for public comments. That is Mr., what are your paper code?
Dennis Lewis.
Dennis Lewis. No, sir.
All right, Mr. Lewis. Hold your seat, sir, in the back. Carrie, get there, get there. If y'all step out and talk, we got a little bit more business to take, Carol. Thank you. Mr. Lewis.
In the past, I have represented the fireworks company, Hail Artificiare. July 10th of this year, we made a decision to cease our operations in North Carolina. Me and Jeff both are too old to do it anymore. And there was a gentleman started working with us seven years ago named Kevin Wetzel. He presented a plan. Jeff looked at it, and we decided that we would turn all our operations over to him. He assumed complete control of eastern operations, which I managed, on October 8th. That was the last show I had contracted. Kevin is a veteran, still works as a government contractor with Homeland Security. That being said, you just approved for him to shoot, allow him to shoot fireworks, Mount Olive for the Pickle Festival. Since 2017, I have maintained that your system is flawed. You require me to present paperwork 40 days in advance. You charged me $85 for a permit fee. I have to prove that I have insurance, and Kevin, I have to do all of this, too. If you walk outside your house, New Year's Eve, you're going to hear fireworks. You may see them. This is the only permitted legal show in the county for July, I mean, December 31st. I think it's wrong that you have charged me and you let everybody else in the county shoot fireworks without doing what I have to do, and it's been going on for seven years. I'll issue you this challenge. If you make a, I'll make a public request, show me all the permits that have been issued the past five years for fireworks. The only person you'll find who did it was me. All other shows were illegal. December the 4th, 2018, Commissioner Dougherty made this comment in a public meeting. He said, "Mr. Lewis thinks he's been discriminated against." I never said I was discriminated against. I said I was not being treated fairly. If you allow other people to do it without paying the permit, I think you would let me shoot without paying the permit. Another thing, Buddy Guy, great blues guitarist, has a song called "Skin Deep," and the line in that song is, "Man in Louisiana never called me by my name." He said, "Boy, do this, boy, do that, and I never once complained." I knew he had a good heart, but he just didn't understand. The only thing I wanted was to be treated like any other man. I don't hate anybody in here. If I hated you, I would have sung that instead of saying it to you. That would have been torture. But I do not appreciate it. For me, I'm willing to let it go. But for you to charge a veteran, a man who fought, bled, and was fortunate enough to come home, to charge him $85 when you don't charge anybody else, it ain't right. Been saying it for seven years in my own case, but for him, it ain't right.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Anybody else, Carol?
No, that's everybody.
All right, public comments are closed. County manager's report, Mr. Proctor.
I did attend the city council meeting last night and witnessed the swearing-in of new council members and congratulate them on their positions. We also enjoyed several Christmas parades this past weekend. We got one more coming up, or a couple more coming up, and looking forward to those, and that's all I have on my manager's report.
All right, Mr. Foster?
Two things. First, you know, I think we've been here going on, this will be our fourth year, and at no point have, you know, Antonio or I, I don't know, been considered of being chair or vice chair. You know, I have an issue with that, you know, for several different reasons. You know, it can be stated for whatever, but I don't think it's in being incompetent, being able to do the job, you know. I made a motion for Antonio because, and nothing against Mr. Acock, I think he's done a great job as chair before, a great job as vice chair before. You know, I think others deserve a chance as well, you know, and from what I know, that was planned way before we got here, and, you know, I think it should be more discussion when those things come up against all board members, you know. I could sit and easily say that it could be a Republican versus Democrat thing. I could easily say it's a black versus white thing. I don't know what it is, but at the end of the day, I would like, in the future, whether I'm here or whoever is here, for you to consider everyone that sits at the table and not just a selective group. Second, on a better note, I enjoyed all three parades Saturday. It was a lot of work, didn't expect any of that. I left the house, what time would it be? 8:30?
8:15.
8:15. I think I got back home, what, 5:30 or something like that? I did not expect it at all, but when I, I can honestly say I had a ton of fun. A big shout-out to Chris. I mean, he came up with a couple of ideas, I think they were his ideas. I want to give them credit if they're not his, but the kids really enjoyed it, from the candy to the fake snow foam, whatever you want to call it. I mean, it was really a good thing to see the smiles on their faces, and then not even just that, that adults. And then not even just that, that adults that enjoyed it, over taking pictures and, and, and video recording and everything else, you know. I think it was just something great, you know, for the community to see us all out there, so, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Charles?
I can carry with Mr. Foster's first statement. As a Republican, I'm still left out of those discussions. I have to find out for my Democratic colleagues who the chair and vice chair will be. So it's not only you that feels that way. Unfortunately, I missed all the, most of the parades, I was in Connecticut visiting my grandkids. They put a smile on my face every time, so, lower my blood pressure. But it's that time of year, folks, be safe out there, and that's basically it.
Stay calm.
I got to agree with Commissioner Foster on the parades. We stole the show at all of them. You know, I don't know whether Chris or Kendall, whoever come up with the snow idea, but, uh, I would have waited to bet that next year there'd be more snow than this year. The only complaint we got was from the shrivers, many rigs, they couldn't, they couldn't get traction on that, on that snow on the ground. But, uh, it was, you know, we, uh, you know, it was great, my parade was good, uh, Fremont, I don't think was quite as large as it has been in the past, but, uh, Goldsboro, uh, they said they had 99 entries, my, you know. I was probably already, because we were right at the front, I was probably already home before the parade ended. But, uh, and, uh, I'm, uh, part of my health issues, I'm good to go. I'm, I'm good to go.
Mr. Acock, if I may, it was actually your assistant county manager that came up with the snow idea, so I want to get, make sure she's giving-
Yes, let's get credit. We mentioned her at a meeting and she ordered it.
And Chris, what you see, you get blamed for everything that you don't even do.
I was a part of that discussion. I mentioned it, I mentioned it and before I knew it, she had it ordered, so.
So she's a new member of the wild bunch.
Exactly.
Well, thank you, Ginger, because it was really, it was to hit everyone we were with. I couldn't make a comment on the Goldsboro parade, but I won't.
Mr. Williams?
Okay, uh, first off, um, I hated that I missed the parade, um, you know, I had a lot of extra things I had to take care of. I love seeing the people and the kids and the candy and just, just being together with the board overall, it's a, it's a good feeling this time of year. Secondly, we had a tough job today based on us, uh, being the board of adjustment. I want people to understand, you know, I, I definitely understand the plight of the farmers here, and I also understand the plight of, um, the landowners and the things that they must do, you know, to take care of their families in the future. But we were held to higher standards here today, we were, we were held as fact founders. And based on being a fact founder, you have to do some things that, you know, morally you may not want to do. So, you know, I, I don't want the farmers that were here and they had an issue earlier to feel like I didn't care about what they had to say and the community being a farming community. So I do definitely care about what you do and I care about the landowners as well. Thank you.
Mr. Doherty?
I gotta be careful while I say this. So I was, I was trying to think. I witnessed something yesterday that, uh, I was really pleased to see. And that is the transfer to a new city council. I have great hopes, uh, that that new council will change the direction and the discussions and the working relationship with this county. And I believe that that will happen. I think our future is very bright with this new council. Things that need to be, have needed to be addressed for years. One of which, the most important, is bringing industry here to this county. We are totally dependent at the present time with the city of Goldsboro to provide the utilities necessary to bring good jobs and industry to our county. If we're to grow, we're going to have to bring jobs here. If we're going to keep our families here, we're going to have to have good jobs here. And it's totally dependent upon the city of Goldsboro's utilities. So with that said, I also want to commend this board for sending a message to the city council by supporting the 375. And I realize we all struggled with that. But I think that it is sending a message that we want to find a new relationship with the city council. And I really believe that that will happen. So congratulations to the new members of the Goldsboro City Council, to our new mayor. And I look forward very much to working with them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Well, I, oh-
Could I make one-
Yes, sir.
Back to the Goldsboro parade, I did mention, uh, Colonel Teal from the base and his daughter and his wife rode with us on our float, and I, I really think they enjoyed it, I think they had a good time. And I want to thank, uh, whoever arranged for him to ride with us, I want to thank you. And, uh, I want to thank him and his family for participating, you know, but they, they, they really act like they really appreciate it.
No, they did have a good time, we all did. Thanks to my, thanks to my fellow board members for their confidence in electing me as chair. I will try to do a good job, uh, try to help move our initiatives forward. The, uh, that deal with Colonel Teal was made about two months ago. I'm, I'm one of those that, I believe in thinking ahead and, uh, so, he, uh, and they did enjoy it. I saw, I stopped by, um, the party at his house, uh, the other night and they basically said they had a ball, so. The snow, you know, I appreciate Ginger, uh, ordering. We, um, I showed her something, I thought, I wish we had one of these, but it was a real big one. She come up with four small ones and, um, and we put, uh, we laid the snow down. I think we put it about two inches thick in pot. But I think, and I think for what I, we ended up in, where the wind was blowing, we ended up in Kendall's truck. But, uh, but anyway, we had, we had fun, that's, that's, I've ever made a comment, um, excuse me, Commissioner Foster, I get a problem saying first names, but anyway. We, uh, he made a comment, he said, "You enjoy this time of year, don't you?" I said, "This is, this is probably my favorite time of the year," it was my mama's. But I like, I like seeing people smile, and not only did we see children smile, we saw adults smile, we saw adults playing in the snow, uh, so, um, that was, that was fun. But, uh, but everybody thinks they want to, uh, I told, um, Chris, well, he said, "I told him we gotta get a, a snow machine." I said, "Cuz," I said, "I said, "Get your own ideas, just, you know, just messing with Chris." But, uh, we had a ball, and I, I, um, I appreciate everybody, uh, participating. We got a couple more to go, and, uh, and we can throw some candy and some, uh, at these and lay some more snow down, so we might try to get a drift of snow up this guy round. All right, uh, so do we need to go into closed session now or take a recess? Or which, which way you want to go about doing it?
Well, let's wrap this up. We have, uh, go back into closed session.
I move we go into closed session.
To consider location of, uh, industry and businesses in Wayne County.
All right. Cast your vote, please. I closed up. All right, we're in closed session.
This is your session.
We good? Alright, record-setting meeting adjourned.